The order. If you would rise please. Let's have a moment of silence for the people that have been hurt this past two weeks in these terrorist attacks in the United States. And then after that, Grant Foster, pastor of Riverside Church, will say an invocation.
Let's pray. Lord, we do think with heavy hearts of those who have lost their lives in these unmerited attacks, especially in Pensacola and the other places, Lord. And so we just pause, as Mayor Dodd just had us pause, Lord, and think of the families and those involved. And we just pray, especially at this holiday season, that, Lord, you'd be with them. But, Lord, for us, we thank you. We thank you for the goodness of God that we get to live in this beautiful paradise we call home. We pray your blessing on this meeting tonight. Give this council wisdom. Give them unity. Give them a spirit of just cooperation to do what needs to be done. And we thank you, and we pray your blessing on the meeting now, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. And Vice Mayor Malti will lead the pledge.
Pledge allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Come here, roll call, please.
Mayor Dodd?
Here.
Vice Mayor Malti. Councilmember Gilliams?
Here.
Councilmember Hill?
Here.
Councilmember Perez?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is agenda modifications. Do we have any agenda modifications?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to go ahead and see if somebody here in the audience may want to present an opposing side to the presentation that's being put out about the herbicides. So if you can modify the presentation part of the agenda, I would appreciate it.
Okay. Let me first say that we're being presented a report by the city manager, and we're going to have two workshops in January on this, at which time anybody can come in and converse on that. And then after we have the two workshops, we'll have a presentation made to us by an individual consultant that we're going to have to ask the city manager to hire to come in and facilitate those workshops and provide us a report back on what the citizen input is. We can vote on your amended agenda modification. It's fine with me to do that. But I don't believe it's particularly good tonight to try to start that process. He's just going to give us his report, and then we're going to have the workshops. And anybody in the city who wants to is going to be able to come in and participate in those workshops. And we are going to have an independent moderator, someone who is not either from city staff or whatever that's involved in that, and that's going to actually do that. So if that satisfies you, fine. If not, then we can vote on your amendment.
Yeah, and again, Mr. Mayor, my point is that there's a lot of people out there watching. We have a good amount of people here tonight. And since we're talking about it, we'd like to get both sides of the argument. And I think we can allocate the same amount of time that we allocate to city manager.
I'm not in favor of that. If you'd like to make a motion for an agenda modification, make the motion.
Well, if you're not in favor of it, obviously I have to have a full majority. So there's no sense in me making a motion.
Well, I mean, it's up to you if you want to do that. But I'm not in favor of that.
That doesn't make any sense. So I'll pass and let the record reflect that you were against the--
I believe it's already reflected that, Mr. Kelly.
Thank you.
I would agree with the mayor on that.
Okay.
The record can reflect that.
So the first item on the Proclamations Briefs Awards is a presentation on Reeds Across America.
Yes, could he? My name's Rick Willis. This is Joe Crowley.
Is that mic on?
Good.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, yeah. And we represent Reeds Across America, Vineyard River County. For those who do not know, I'll give you a brief history on where we came from. Upon entering into a new career last year, I met Mr. Crowley, and he explained a program that he was involved in in his hometown up north. And the more he explained it and talked to me about it, the more I liked it, and the more I thought it was an opportunity to bring this to Vineyard River County. And I asked him if I could join him in doing so. He agreed. I had just come out of 30 years with the city of Vero Beach, so I had some connections there. He knew the program. And what it is, it began as the Arlington Wreath Project back in the '90s. And it's a way to remember and honor those who served our country. We brought it in last year. We sponsored Cresslon Cemetery and Veterans Memorial Island. We felt we had a very good year. In our first year, we raised 900 wreaths, or a little over. And so this year, we sponsored Sebastian. This will take place on Wreath Day, which is December 14th. Now, this is not just a declaration. This is a way, as I said, their motto is to remember, honor, teach. We remember our veterans first by asking volunteers to come out and help us to lay wreaths. We ask them to take the wreath to the grave of a veteran, to read the inscription upon that headstone, to take a moment to reflect and consider that individual, and then we ask them to say that individual's name aloud. And we do this because, as I'm sure most of you know, we all die twice. The first time, when we take our last breath. The second time is when our name is last said, and we feel that those that served our country should not be forgotten. Then we ask them to, of course, honor that individual by laying that wreath on that grave for the holidays. And then the teach part, of course, is we want the younger generation to come out so that they can learn where their freedom should come from. So as I said, on December 14th, here in Sebastian, at 10:30, we will begin laying wreaths. And from there, we will proceed down to Veterans Memorial at Riverside Park to have a sort ceremony at noon, which corresponds with the ceremony at Arlington National Cemetery. And this ceremony takes place all over the nation, all at the same time. And so we are here to invite you, to invite the public, to come join us in remembering, honoring these individuals. Now, I'd like to let Joe take over and talk to you a little bit and kind of fill you in on how many wreaths we actually got this year, and tell you a little bit about the ceremonies.
Good evening. My name's Joe Crowley. I'll keep this brief. This was a great year. Rick's being modest when he said he thought about this and then decided he'd come on board and try to help out. I came back saying, I'm going to bring this to this county. Being new to this county, didn't know anybody, didn't know where to turn to, didn't know any of the places. So without Rick, I was just an idea, it would have been a flash in a pan. But here we are, two years later. We raised enough wreaths this year that not only is Cresslon Cemetery, Veterans Memorial Island, Sebastian Municipal, we are also going to be putting wreaths at Gifford and also Felsmere and West Wabasha. We went well above what we tried to do. It was a great-- I mean, people were very supportive of this this year. And hopefully, next year, we can pick up the last three, four cemeteries in this county and make this a true countywide event. It doesn't work without the people. We need the volunteers and the citizens on this Saturday at 10:30 here in Sebastian to lay the wreaths. And I promise you, anyone who does come to this event, you will come back again next year. This will be the first annual for you because it is really a good event. The ceremony is going to mirror what they do at Arlington National Cemetery, the script and everything about it. We've worked hard in our two locations here at Riverview and then over at Riverside in Vero to get a quality ceremony and get the right people to do the speaking. So we'd love to have you there. We'd love to see everybody who's watching this, people behind me. Please come out this Saturday, 10:30, and lay a wreath to remember a veteran.
Okay. Thank you. Let me do something first. Carolyn Anderson, will you please stand up? This lady brought Reeds Across America to Sebastian three and a half years ago and tried to get it to kick off. And because of some communication issues, it didn't make it. And I just want to-- it's a great program. You've done a great job putting it together. I'd like to recognize her and also introduce her to you two guys because I have a feeling she might be more than willing to help you get all the volunteers you need.
We like that.
Okay.
This is a very big team that keeps growing.
That's her right there. So check her out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just real quick.
Yes, go ahead.
Where do they meet on Saturday at 10:30? Did they say?
Where are you going to meet on Saturday at 10:30?
Saturday at 10:30, we will be at Sebastian Municipal Cemetery. That's where we'll lay the wreaths. Once we're done with that, we'll proceed out the backside, go down Vineyard River Boulevard, and then set up and do the ceremony at Riverview Park. So 10:30 at Sebastian Cemetery.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Now we have a presentation from the Director of Growth Management about the kickoff for the Comprehensive Development Plan for 2040 plan.
Good evening, council. Thank you.
That mic is not working either.
It's not working. It's-- Hello?
Now it is.
Anyways, thank you. I'm really pleased to be presenting our process for updating the 2040 Comprehensive Development Plan for the city. The state requires that local governments update their comprehensive plans every seven years. So our last review was the year, it's called the Evaluation and Appraisal Report, I'm sorry, it was about to go for me, in 2010, but it was adopted in 2012. Therefore, this year, we had to inform the Department of Economic Opportunity that we were going to update our comprehensive plan this year, and we have until September of 2020 to do this. So we're moving quick. What is a comprehensive plan? Well, it's a set of policies intended to serve as the community's vision and to guide the development of a community typically over a 10- to 20-year period. Our current plan goes out to 2025, so we're going to bring this one out to 2040. And I want you to know, the PZ Commission, I'm sorry, Planning and Zoning Commission is very excited to do the heavy lifting for this plan. It is guided under the Florida Statute, Chapter 163. And in accordance with Florida Chapter 163, these are the required elements that we will be updating. Now, there are alternative elements that we do have within our plan include the public schools and the capital improvement program. They will be also updated. The economic development element is not in this scope. It is more of a larger scope than we can do in one year. So we'll do that at a separate time. The process includes analysis of the existing plan to see how it meets changes in the Florida statute. Our consultant has already done that. They, of course, analyze the existing plan. They provide a complete data and analysis review of our current natural resources, our current transportation, that type of data. We shake it all up and we throw it out for everyone's dissemination. We will have extensive public involvement. And then the Planning and Zoning Commission, acting as the local planning agency, will recommend the plan to you, the city council, for your transmittal up to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity. This is the approach, if you will. Now, we do not plan on giving you, the council, a 600-plus-page document in September saying, "Here you are, approve it, please." So at the same time that we provide the information to the PZ Commission, we will also be submitting it to you all. And of course, you're always more than welcome to attend the public workshops, to provide your input. At any time, please come to staff and ask any questions or provide your input there. And then this way, when the final draft does come back to you in September, we're hoping that you'll feel very comfortable that you've had a chance to review it and digest it and transmit it along to the state for their review. Now, this is the proposed timeline. All of these dates are set to be the same dates as our regularly scheduled Planning and Zoning Commission meetings, as well as some of our advisory board meetings like the NRB and the Parks and Rec. So we didn't want to take even more time away from our volunteers in the community. And this will be adequately advertised. Of course, once this proposed timeline is set in stone, we will have it on the website so everybody is fully aware of the times and the places and the subjects that will be tackled that particular evening. So with that, I thank you. We look forward to this process. Again, the Planning and Zoning Commission is really excited, and I'm excited to work with them and with all of you. Any questions?
Ma'am?
Yes.
Yes, in the future, great presentation, by the way.
Thank you.
It would be nice that if we had it in a packet, and we can prepare it for the meeting and review it, this way we can have questions. So for next time.
Absolutely. I'd be happy to. And if you'd like a copy, I'll make sure it's in your box.
Please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, please.
A copy, Mr. Malti?
Yes, please.
I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Malti.
You have to do it for all if you do it for one, so--
Oh, I know. Exactly. And you'll all have one tomorrow. Thank you so much. Take care.
Thank you. All right. Now, I'm going to do a slight introduction real quick on this. The herbicide report, last spring, the council asked the city manager to produce a report that identified options for-- it wasn't called herbicide, it was called options for cleaning vegetation from body bodies and canals, I think is what we called it, something like that. This document is just his options. It's not any conclusions. He did provide some sundry information on some cost breakdowns on some various things. Although these are not dollars, are not fixed bids on doing that, they're just what I call wags. I won't tell you what that means, but if you're an engineer, you've probably heard that before. And so when he makes his presentation, he's not telling us that these are what he's proposing that we do.
Can you tell me what a wag is?
No. It's a wild da-da guess.
Gotcha.
Okay. What he's doing is he's presenting the options that he found that are available to do this. Okay? And there's a lot of them in the document.
There is. May I?
Yeah. Okay.
I appreciate all the time and effort you put into this, Mr. Carly. I understand it's a lengthy presentation, but I'd just like to make a motion for local vendors to be able to put in RFPs. I know that's required for solicitation--
Well, we haven't gotten to that process yet. Yes, they will do that.
Oh, good.
It will be bid under the normal purchasing process for the city--
Okay.
--when anything's done with this.
Thank you.
Yes. Everything's done under the normal purchasing process for the city.
So if I may, Mr. Mayor, we'll do that when we determine what our processes are going to be.
Yes, yes.
And then we can determine how we're going to move forward. And I hope to not make this a lengthy process. The report is very lengthy. There's a lot of slides in this, but we'll go over them succinctly, but to give you the information. The best time to discuss these items is when we're at the workshop, where we can go into more detail and get direction from you all. So with that, the mayor had started it out with like my first slide. The evaluation wasn't-- it was to provide options that may be available and how we can manage the overall stormwater systems and parks as we move forward. I can tell you that this report opened my eyes as I was looking at things. And it was-- so I appreciate the council asking me to do it. I was kind of like, oh, boy, where am I going to find the time? But I can tell you, it was very beneficial. There was a lot of information that I got as I did this, gathered this information. What this report was originally sanctioned to do was just talk about alternatives to glyphosate. It wasn't to determine whether glyphosate was good, bad, or indifferent. It was what are alternatives to glyphosate? So we looked at that and looking at how we can do best management practices moving forward. What can we do as a city to do better for our environment, for our citizens, and those that are affected by it? And the University of Florida IFAS was very helpful. Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission was very helpful. So I had conversations, emails with a lot of those individuals. But when we talk about our best management practices, we're going to be talking about considering available management options, understanding the biology of the waterways and the organisms that live in it. We need to consider impacts of how this management practice affects the overall systems. And then we need to look at how we reduce the invasive species to a point where it is economically and socio-economically favorable for that, and then allow flexibility in our plan to adapt as the environment and the changes come about. So that's how we're going to address the best management practices. We looked at legal means of treatment. You know, we've had a lot of comments about mix this chemical, mix that chemical. With us, it's the label is the law. If it's not labeled for its use, we can't use it for that use. We looked at what our current practices were and if they were efficient or not. We looked at other methodologies, permit requirements that were required to maintain our properties in a certain manner, cost versus effectiveness, sustainability, and what other communities have done. And we're going to talk about some of those tonight. So here's the legal aspect. Federal law says we have to follow the label. We can't just make our own concoctions. We have to-- if it's not labeled for its use, we can't use it. And that comes straight from the federal government. We don't get a say in that. It was discussed that we, as a city, should regulate the use of pesticides by the residents, like we do our fertilizers. That was suggested as one of the legal options, is if we can-- because, let's face it, most residents, I'm not picking on them, if a little's good, more is better. So they don't always follow the label. And I'm sure that's a minority, but that happens. But the state preempts us. Under Statute 482 and 487, the state says we regulate the use of pesticides, herbicides, and chemicals. The cities can't impose their own ban on those. We have to follow the state regulation on that. We can ban our staff from what we do, but we can't ban it. If it's legally permissible by the state, we can't ban the residents from doing it. Though we may want to, we may like to, we're just preempted from the state. So in doing this study, there was no sense in reinventing the wheel. The city of Boca Raton had done a similar study. So I talked with them, and I got permission to use some of their slides. I have some of our slides in with their slides. And they asked why develop a pilot program? Because they went out and they used a lot of these organics. So we didn't have to go and reinvent the wheel and retest it. We could look at their program and see what the successes and failures that they had. And, you know, they talk about there's two schools of thought, glyphosate's the worst thing in the world, or it's not. So and again, this report wasn't to determine whether it was or wasn't, but this is just something that they addressed in their report. You talk to one group, it's highly carcinogenic. You have one that says it may not be. But again, that wasn't our charge. So the Extension Office from IFAS, University of Florida, they associate organic as safer. And that may or may not be true. As you know, coffee's could be poisonous. Things that are not used properly are poisonous. Organic vinegars and these types of things create caustic, they're acids, so they end up burning, and burning skin, and they seen some results of that. When I talked to the University of Florida, I sent him some labels on some of the vinegar products that we had looked at, and he was concerned about the PPE that the employees would have to wear because of the caustic ability of it. I talked to the manufacturer of one gobbler, and he specifically said not to use it in water and aquatic. So we didn't think that was going to be usable in those circumstances. But just because it's organic doesn't always mean safer. There's a lot of organic compounds out there that will kill you. So in this program, for nine months, they did. They tried the molasses, they tried the dry molasses, Avenger, which is a vinegar, Miramichi Green, there's a couple cities were trying that, very expensive, and Dr. Earth, which is a salt-based. And they had some mixed-use successes with those. And they did a breakdown on a park that they did, of course. And I can tell you that as you get into some of these organics, costs considerably escalate. The Miramichi Green on 35 acres in the city is about $600,000 if we were to use it over 35 acres of different areas because of the cost, and it's 80 gallons to the acre. So it may be, it may sound like a green product, but you're putting a lot out there. So some of these products sound good, but it takes a lot, and there's not a lot of residual with it. And so when you look at that, constantly putting salt on something would change the pH, vinegar will change the pH of the soil, so it may have adverse effects. Not that it's not effective in some instances, but some of these costs are pretty astronomical and so changes. You know, from Roundup as being $5,000 to the Avenger, which is $38,000 for the annual cost, not to mention the more applications and what it may have an effect on the soil and the environment. So organics are effective in killing small plants, young plants. One of the things that they do is they burn the plant, and they don't have a lot of residual, as we said earlier. We'll show, I have some slides that they did that show that. So large plants, they can suffer some leaf damage, they may suffer some dieback, but if you don't get a complete coverage, it may not be effective. You've got to go back and retreat, retreat, retreat. And so, and some of the plants recover quickly after the treatment. So again, they've had mixed results in their study. Sometimes it works, and it says, you know, when sprayed it two to four times as frequently, they were marginally successful, even though they were done two to four times the application rate. And they have been largely ineffective in increased weed growth and weed coverage in areas typically maintained at a higher level. So they saw that in areas that they were using these, that they were seeing some, and there were slides that they showed, they were showing excessive weed growth, growing. But the insecticides, the organic insecticides, they did see some promise with that. So there are some organic mosquito and bug killers that actually worked. You know, we all know that Borax is one of them, and it works very well for ants. So the herbicides didn't show a lot of promise, the insecticides, the organic insecticides did. So this is Avenger full strength and Roundup full strength, and obviously, day one. And this is two days later. So the Avenger burned it out very, very quickly. Roundup's just starting to turn a yellow. This is after one week. It's already starting to grow back. After two weeks, it's basically back. So you would, every 14 days, you would have to spray that chemical, and that's full strength. That's not even in the manufacturer's water recommendation of dilution. Then the next one talks, that is, four weeks later, it's basically unaffected. This is at the regular strength application, you know, the manufacturer's recommended strength versus Roundup on the right. And again, after one week, it's already starting to show signs of returning. Why is this important? You know, we want to make sure we're doing what's right. We want to make sure that it's effective. And if all we're going to do is continue to burn the top of the plant, it's not effective, and it doesn't allow us to provide what the residents expect in our parks and playgrounds and open spaces. And we're going to talk about one that I think is going to be great for that. This is Miramichi Green. In one city, I think it was Tarpon Springs, they used it, and then they stopped you on their fence lines in their parks. So this is two days, burn it right out. One week, it starts growing back. Two weeks, it's almost back. Four weeks, it's basically back to non-use. This is the ECO mic. This is the stuff we've been talking about. This is the whack-out weeds. I know it's a funny name, but I talked to the manufacturer today, and he's excited to see what we can do in the water, because we haven't been able to test it in the aquatics because of the ban that's in place. I think we're going to have some success with it. They've used it on power line rightaways, they've used it in a lot of places. It is more expensive, but it's a minimum-risk chemical, which means EPA has about 25 chemicals that they don't-- if you have those in there, it doesn't require a label, doesn't require EPA registration, and Florida requires a registration. So this is minimum risk. And I'm going to show you how excited I am about this because this is what will be beneficial in our parks and open spaces because it is completely natural. So remember, Roundup on the right, wow on the left. This is seven days, almost identical treatment. 24 days, almost identical treatment. 28 days. That's pretty remarkable. And so you can get the same effect, it's about two to three times as much money, but we don't use enough of it in the parks and open spaces to justify not using it. If we were using a ton of Roundup and glyphosate in our parks and open spaces, we would have to think about that. But we don't use a ton of it in our-- we only used 26 gallons of it in the entire system last year. So this would be a great opportunity for us to provide a safe chemical that's deemed by the EPA to be minimum risk. So this was from back to the Boca Raton. So they've talked about some of their employees suffered risks and damage from the chemicals and reactions to the organics. And so we need to think about our employees. And they received complaints from residents and people regarding the strong odor and what it did to their overall experience in the parks, where they did it in the private, in the parks where the pilot program was. So they went to the Florida Recreation Parks Association Conference, and they talked to their colleagues about it. Who else knows but the people that have to deal with it every day throughout the state? And they said that they were unsuccessful in a lot of the organics. They counted weeds and a range of complaints from their residents that they didn't feel was acceptable. And they said that they were unsuccessful in a lot of the organics. They counted weeds in a range of, weeds in a range of complaints from their residents that they didn't feel was acceptable. And they said the continued investment in new products did not translate into improvement in the condition of the parks and the, and the open areas. And the national, same thing. Drango, Colorado, the other places throughout the state, they saw the same, that some of these organics just didn't provide the outcome. Their, the weeds in their turf went from 5% to 50%. So they saw a decline in their overall turf grass. They saw a decline in the, in the overall satisfaction of the people that were visiting the parks. But I think we can overcome that with this new product. I don't think that's going to be a challenge for us as we, we take this more environmentally-friendly product and put it to, put it to use. So when we looked at all of the options, because I was told to look at everything. So in there, there's, there's everything that I could find in there. And again, talking with IFIS and FWC. And biological control, there's, you know, the state has tried on, with five different types of plants with different biological controls and talking to Carrie Mentor, you know, she, varying degrees of success. And so the one that's out there now is a thrip that they just released in Davie for Brazilian peppers, the first one that's really been released and has some, some potential. They don't know how it's going to react, so it's not open for us to get at this time. The alligator pond beetle, grass beetle, we have that. The state put that throughout the state years ago. And it's, and we don't have any alligator weed because of that. Thrips for hyacinth and that have been not successful. They haven't done, done much. There's one moth that does, is successful, fairly successful with water hyacinth or water lettuce. But the biological can't overcome the growth rate. These water hyacinths and water lilies, in summertime, they'll double their, their size in 14 days, seven to 14 days, depending on the water and the temperature. So if you can't beat it back at doubling the rate every seven to 14 days, it's going to overtake it. So when we look at, look at the biological control, some of the things we can do, and one of the options is when we get our canal systems and our open space back under control because it's been, it has been managed well over the years through budget, through economic downturns and things like that, we have to get it back into shape. And then we can look at some of these other biological controls, grass carp in some of these small ponds. We tried it in some of the other canals, and we lost them due to freeze and to flooding over the canal. So biological controls are out there. I think grass carp, the air potato beetle. Hopefully this, this thrip for the Brazilian pepper will be something we can address. Chinese tallow, we have a little bit, but there's not much. There's a, there's a biological organism that attacks that. So we need to look at using those where we, where it makes sense. So livestock, I was asked about goats. I looked at it. And I talked to Beth Powell, and she, and lo and behold, she's using goats. And the challenge with the goats was interaction with people, keeping the people from opening gates. And she has it in an area where people don't frequent, but the goats get out and they did damage to the neighbor's property and trees. So managing the goats is, would be a challenge. And there's not anybody out there doing new customers now. She has a startup company that's doing it for her as a pilot. But trying to get enough goats to do something like at the Stormwater Park would be not manageable at this time. And you have a problem with, they'll eat the good plants and the bad plants. And then they also produce seeds through, when they evacuate themselves, they spread bad seeds. So though it has its place in unpopulated areas and where the public doesn't go, it may have some potential. Where you have an area that you've gotten it under control and you want to keep the invasives down, it may be something to look at. I don't think it's something that Sebastian wants to put in our plan. And I talked about these ecological. Harvesters, this is the biggest conversation we've had is manual harvesting and collecting. And there's three or four slides on this, but I'll just give you the overview. It's expensive, it's slow, high maintenance and high operating cost. But I think we should do some of that to get our canals back into shape. As we look at this, I think it's very imperative that we get this stuff out of the water. We don't let that nutrient load fall back into the water. We're going to talk about dredging and that as well. But harvesters, you know, they're, they're slow. They, again, they have a hard time keeping up in large water bodies. We don't have large enough water bodies. I think that's going to be a problem for us to keep up with harvesters. The biggest problem we're going to have is getting it out of the canals because we don't have any place to put it on the canal banks where it's populated. People aren't going to want us to dump that in their yards. So you've got to transport that from the far end of the canal to the other far end of the canal. Every mile you transport it doubles the cost. And then you have the cost of disposal. I'm not saying it's not doable, and I'm not saying not look at it, just understand there's going to be a cost with that. So, but one of the big things that is, everything has a reaction, has a cause and a reaction. So when we talk about harvester being environmentally and ecologically friendly, understand that in Hydrola, 32% of the first-year fish and invertebrates are removed when that Hydrola is removed. So you're taking out the very fish and invertebrates that you don't want to harm, and you take out good plants with bad plants. Again, I think it's something we look at. I think it's something we do to try to get our waterways in place, back into a condition where we can manage it because it's not manageable in the condition it is. But understand, manual harvesting doesn't come without some inherent biological effects. So again, it's, it's not good in shallow water, snags, which we have a lot of snags and a lot of shallow waters, but we'll have to fix that when we talk about some drainage, some dredging. Shorebase, track hose and drag lines, these are going to be imperative that we use these on some of these canal banks, especially around the Stormwater Park. They make sense. The city used to have mowers that used to mow those with flail mowers, downturning the economy. They went bye-bye and they were never replaced. So we're looking at some of those options as well, adapting those to some of our equipment that we have to be able to do some of that. But we're going to have to use, utilize this process to get those, all that Brazilian pepper out of the water parks and out of the canal systems through both dredging, through both barges and shorebase. We'll talk about barges, but this is going to be imperative that we use these types of equipment on the canal banks. We've got to get it back in shape. Our goal is we've got to get these canals back and water parks back in shape. And they're typically, again, used more for reactive when you have a major flood or rain event and it pushes all of it to one end. Typically, these are done. But I think in our case, we have so much overgrowth on our banks, we need to address it this way. And again, it's a slow process. If you're going to try to excavate water, but on the banks, it'll be fairly, fairly, fairly quick and fairly economically beneficial to do it that way. When you start, but when you start doing it in the water, you raise turbidity issues. Again, you're removing some wildlife, good plants and bad, good plants and bad plants at the same time. But again, we're in such a point now, we're going to have to take the good with the bad. Hand pulling, a lot of that's been talked about. Digging the plants out, pulling it up. The problem is with roots and trying to get those roots out. I think the bigger problem's going to be getting people to want to do it and hiring enough people to do it. But it's so slow, I don't think we would ever, you could ever dip enough water hyacinth and water lettuce by hand. And if you leave the roots, all you do is you strengthen the plant, just like pruning it. So the studies have shown that. But again, we do need to get this vegetation out of the water and not just kill it. Bethnik barriers, those are basically, we've all done it in our yard where we have a garden, we put black plastic down and kill it and leave it there. Again, it kills good and bad. It kills environmentally-friendly organisms, and it's hard to maintain. Once it goes or it gets covered, the growth just comes back. Cutting and shearing, you know, if you go in there with sickle bars and cut it, you know, I had one contractor talk about it in the garden park. He can come in here and he can cut the, the cattail that's there. He can cut the spatter dock that's there. He said in 14 days, it'll be back because all you did was basically mow the grass underwater. You've got to get the root system out. There's other possibilities where you throw chains out and you pull machines on the bank and pull it up that way. But again, you end up leaving the roots. The roots become stronger because they've been pruned and they, they want to survive. The best methodology in some of these is to dredge it and remove it. And so, and you get, you get fragmentation and it expand, you can expand the growth where it's not needed. Dredging, it's expensive. It's, it does produce some seed pods that will grow out into the water and start new colonies. But I think we're in such a position with our water bodies now with silt buildup and historical nutrient loads, I think we're going to have to really consider this in segments and phase it in. Because if we don't get rid of the historic silt and the nutrient loads, we're going to be battling this every year from now on until we get this back to a cross-section in the canals where it makes sense. And get it, get that historical nutrient load out of the water system. I think that is imperative. Again, it, you're taking good with bad, but I think we've got so much bad out there. Getting rid of that is going to far outweigh. And then once that's done in some of these smaller ponds and the dredging and it's clean, then we could address what comes back. Is it grass carp? Is it some spraying? Is it, is it mechanical? What is it that we need to do once we get the canal system and the pond system restored to its functioning capacity, the way it was designed to do? But the key to all of this is we've got to get our system back. We've got to, we've got to reclaim our system. This is Hardy Park just, just a week ago. How quick this vegetation grows. And this is, this is, this is continuing to be an issue. This is Garden Park, and Spatter Dock is coming in, and the cattails are taking over the canal there off of Engler. This is, years we have cut back spraying and cut back, and we lost the equipment to mow those banks back. And so this is almost impassable. This is almost an impassable canal. We couldn't get in there for an emergency cleanup if we had to because this is what we're left with today. So we need to address this. So option one, here we go. Keep it, just do what we've been doing. What's the definition of insanity? Do the same thing over and over again, expect a different result? I don't think this is an option for us. I don't think this is a good option, but this is something that's available to us. It's something the council can consider. I don't think it's progressive. I don't think it gives us what we need. I think it keeps us in a downward turn of our environment, it keeps a downward turn of our water quality issues, and doesn't promote a quality of life for the citizens of Sebastian, which we all came here to have. Option two, alternative spray chemicals, organics with reduced use of Glycophate. I can tell you, I will tell you that in all of the people that I've talked to at the University of Florida and FWC, every one of them said, "You'll never get away from complete spraying." But you all can direct staff however you want. But Jason Farrell from the University of Florida, which everybody said, "Call him, talk to him." I did, I called him, talked to him, emailed him. He said, "You're not going to get away from spraying. You're not going to get 100% away from spraying." That was his opinion. And he is the professional. And I've talked to Dr. Wayne DeFreeze, he reviewed my report. He says the same thing. You're not going to completely spray. Well, we spray maybe, but again, this was about Glycophate. So we can do this, and it's costly, but you're going to keep functioning at the current levels, which I don't think is the goal. So use alternative treatments only, you know, manual harvesting and all organic treatments. We don't know what this will do because we don't know what effect we'll have in the aquatics because a lot of the organics have been labeled not for aquatic use. And those that I've talked to said, "Not for aquatic use." So no chemical spraying, organic treatments only. It's expensive, but we don't know how expensive because we don't know how effective it will be once we find a way to do it. So these are, again, these are things we can, if we go out to bid and we can get an estimate, we'll figure, we'll find out the true cost. Again, like I said, the Miramichi Green, which is a green product, was like $700,000 to do just 35 acres of spraying. So keeping that in mind. So limited chemicals, different variety of chemicals that we, that we currently use, contracted manpower and equipment, and it's, it's almost $4 million. It's, it's expensive. And then we use option five, which is kind of my recommendation, is limited use of chemicals, mechanical removal, capital restoration, which is what I talked about. Let's get the canal systems, let's get these pond systems back in place. Let's look at using this Whack Out Weeds in public places and public parks and open spaces where it makes sense. Use the environmentally-friendly ecosystem, the grass carp, the beetles, the thrip when it becomes available for us to invest in that program, the air potato beetle. So when we go back to the IFIS, we have to, it tells us the integrative pest management is consider all available management options, not just one. It's not integrated if you're only doing one. It's not integrated, it's not successful if you don't attack the problem. We've got to get a base system back to where it's functioning and then address what comes back. This also talks about putting in litorial plantings. We have some areas that are perfect for litorial shelf planting to improve the water quality of the fish habitat and that. So let's get, and we can talk about it at the workshop. We don't need to beat it up tonight, and I've said it a million times. But I'm, I feel strongly about getting these canals back and these waterways back to where they need to be and manage them correctly. And to do it. And I'll tell you how it works. I'll show you how it works. So this is a successful integrated approach that we at the city of Sebastian did. This is Dave Drive Containment Area. It was overgrown, muck-filled, not working, not functioning. It had zero, it was not going to work in a, in a major flood. The Stormwater crew went in there with manual, with back hose and bobcats and cleaned out the sediment from, in front of the structures, cleared all the banks of most of the, well, they cleared the Brazilian pepper off. We did light spraying through applied aquatics to get rid of some of the vegetation they couldn't get to with the machinery. And those are not Muscovy ducks, those are Florida mallards that are in that pond right there. That's pretty awesome. And now there's just a few areas of some, some cattail that'll need to be addressed from time to time. That's working. Questions?
Well, thank you, Paul.
You're welcome.
We are beyond compliance, of course, with our contract with SJWD. And you, that's obviously priority. It's nice to see the reduction of blue-green algae growing in these places. So I'm happy that we're coming to some solutions. And I'd like to see the environmentalists and the specialists from SJWD and, oh gosh, so many other places. Coming to the workshops, do we have any idea when the first workshop will be held?
We've got to talk about that. Let's wait, ask the questions of him, and then we'll talk about that as a group.
Okay. Then tell me more about WOW. I know you were testing it, and you said there were good results. And I actually spoke to the township of Jupiter too, and although they're not using it, they were big advocates of it. So what was your final result after the testing?
So if you saw the slides, it worked as well as Roundup. I mean, our results are as good as Roundup, as good as Glycophate. I, I mean, that is a miracle. I talked to Boca Raton. Brian had talked to the town of Jupiter and told them about the WOW. I talked to Boca Raton, and the guy said, this is exact words, "I'm waiting for the other shoe to drop because this stuff works." The people in Tarpon Springs, they did a five-acre site with it. And she says, "I, I applied it in the rain. I wasn't even supposed to, but I applied it and it rained and it still worked." And so it's, it's almost one of those things, if it sounds too good to be true, it probably is. We'll probably find out that peppermint oil is probably the next carcinogen. I'm just kidding. But today, it is a chemical that we can use and we can feel good about using in our parks to make sure that we are doing the right thing. And that's what we should be doing.
Parks and stormwater and golf courses.
Where we can. I don't know, I don't know if I can use it in stormwater. I have not been able to test it in aquatics.
Okay.
I have not, because of the spray ban, I've not been able to test it in aquatics. So to see if it works. But I can tell you that our test results and our, and our test patch, even though the cost is more expensive, I'll, I mean, it's not available to the public right now, but it, it's something that I would use at my house.
Yeah, our lagoon's responsible for $3.5 billion annually, so I think we can afford not to do something else, killing the lagoon. Thank you.
Anyone else, questions?
See if we can get this thing to work. You described a dirty dozen and a list of aquatic weeds and, which specifies the unwanted invasive vegetation that you're dealing with. Have you thought about doing a segment of a certain canal and test and then move on to another canal?
That's exactly my plan. That's exactly what I want to do, is I want to do it in segments. I don't want to just wholesale go in and do everything all at one time. We, we don't have the funds, one. And two, we, you know, we have to, you've got to systematically do this. You're not going to be able to go in there. It's too big. It's too big a project to go in there and just do it all at one time. So we need to look at, and this will be the plan, and you all will help develop that plan in the workshop, is what do you want to start on, you know?
So you are leaning towards a, more of a mechanical and biological and physical ways and means of getting this problem taken care of?
All of the above. So there will be some spraying, there will be some, the majority of, what needs to happen first is we need to get the canals back in place and the ponds. And that's excavating. That's going in there with equipment and machinery and removing that stuff that shouldn't be there. That's number one. That's going to give us a base, in my opinion, to look at what comes back. And then we can address that because that's going to be easy because now we've got a clean slate, say to speak, so to speak. And we can look at the beneficial plantings that we plant and see how they integrate in. And maybe those have to be changed, what they do. We've got one pond that's got some boll rust, it's working very well. And we're monitoring that. So, you know, there's things that we can do to help stabilize those banks, remove the, and they'll help, those litorial plantings will help remove nutrients from the fertilizers and things that get into our waterways. So all of these things are going to be integrated, but you're going to have to do some spraying.
The sprays that you're considering, they're non-toxic, right?
I don't know that I can do that. I don't know that I can do that.
I didn't see anything in your report about using sprays that are non-toxic.
Well, we just have the WOW.
Well, I was going to ask, get to that next.
Yeah, that's the one that I'm recommending that we can start using. So, and that's in this slide. The, I can't say whether I can use that in the aquatics yet. I don't, I don't know that I can do that yet.
So I suggest we start testing soon. We have 120-day ban, right?
No, you have a year on the water.
I was looking at your numbers on option five. I see you got capital restoration projects under that option for $500,000, but it's not reflected in any other options. Can you tell me why?
Because all the other options were keeping the canals functioning at their current capacity. And you can change that. You all can say to us how you want to do the program. So it's, you know, these are not, this is what we'll do, nothing else. You all, during these workshops, will direct staff on the processes you want to use. And we're open to whatever the council sees fit. I mean, this is, this is why we're here.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah. So at the workshops, you'll be presenting other alternatives that are favorable to the community that are non-toxic and...
How about if we talk about the workshops?
Okay. Sure, I'd like to. Yeah, that's a great idea, Mr. Mayor.
I think, I think that we should, we can define what we'd like to see out of the workshops.
Sure. That's going to be done in January, February?
Well, depends. If you want me to hire someone, I've got to go out and try to find someone.
Well, because we have a moratorium on spraying for 120 days.
Well, and that's, that's another thing, and I wasn't going to bring this up now, it's going to bring it up later, but I asked, the city manager gave each of you a breakdown on the pesticides on the...
I haven't given it to everybody yet. I just got it.
Oh, I thought, they didn't all get it?
No, I haven't got a chance to get it all, get a copy.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
You'd asked for, you'd asked for, I had not had a chance to copy.
Let's talk about that when we get down to item...
You're privy to private information, Mr. Mayor.
I didn't realize that. I thought he gave it to everybody.
You are special.
He handed it to me right here. I thought he handed it to everybody.
No, that's not, that wasn't the goal.
When we get down to item...
So here's the thing, Mr. Mayor, this has been going on for over eight months. And procrastination, we're done with that.
Okay. Councilmember Gilliam, no one's been procrastinating on this. There's a lot of work that's been done.
I agree. And I'm not saying this.
And I want to, I want to clear that up right now, as quick as I can, okay? For the last six months, I've heard so many things about the fact that we're doing nothing. We have not been doing nothing. He's been doing this report and he's produced a lot of data. He's produced a lot of information. He's produced a lot of base information. We have to do two things now with this report. The first thing we have to do is we have to get the citizens out here to agree that they're willing to spend the money that it will take to do this. I'm not going to pass a budget increase of $300,000 or $400,000 just because I think it's a smart thing to do. I want the citizens to input into that. That's the first step of the workshops. We need to have two workshops unless the citizens agree that these approaches are correct. The second thing we have to do is put together a work plan. And we can do that in a workshop between the city manager and the council, put together a work plan. And then we have to fold that work plan into the 21, 22 budget, which happens next summer because there's no budgeted funds right now unless we don't do something else. Now, if there's some magic thing that you would like to see about that, we'll talk about that when we get down to that point. There's, it's been so disheartening to me to sit in his office and have him tell me about all the neat things he's looking for and the stuff he's been finding and then reading the newspaper the next day that this city's done nothing. It's absolutely untrue. It's been untrue since it started. And it really disturbs me when people talk about that. There's been a lot of work done and we're going to move forward with this work.
Can we pick a workshop in January, February?
We certainly can, but we have to talk about two things about the citizen workshop, first of all.
Okay, let's talk about that.
I don't think that it's appropriate for the city manager to lead a workshop unless the citizen community brings it together. There's been way too many controversial things done about this. So I would like for him, and I'd like to get the council to decide whether they agree, like for him to hire an impartial facilitator to facilitate those workshops. If he can't, if he can do that and accomplish the workshops in January, that's great. I'd love to see it happen. I'd love to see the workshops happen next week. If he, but he has to find a facilitator to do that. We need to have, I believe, a workshop in the evening and a workshop during the day for those people who can't attend an evening workshop. So we give the citizens an opportune time to come either during the day or in the evening. What the facilitator can talk about is the options and the cost and get feedback from the community about what they're willing to do and what they would like to see done, okay? They, he can bring that report, he or she, and bring that report back to the council. We can use that in unison in a workshop that we do probably in February, I hope in February, with the city manager to lay this out and to decide on what direction he's going to take and to produce a work plan to accomplish that. This isn't all going to get done that quick. As far as the 120-day ban, we can, one of two things. We can extend the ban if we have to, if that's what the council wants to do. Or we can talk about, that's the reason I asked you to produce this, here's a list, and if, we don't need to do it tonight, I'll have to get it to everybody. Here's a list that comes from the, our leisure department about the kinds of things that they need to do on the ball fields within the next 60 days to 90 days. At some point in time in January at a meeting, we may discuss the possibility of allowing them to do this even with a ban in place. But we can look at these items and make that determination as to whether we do that. So I think, I think that there's a gigantic amount of work that's been done. The work is very positive. I haven't heard the city manager say a word about not using glyphosate for a long time. He's very happy with what he's got.
Well, good. That's a start.
And so I don't, I don't think, I think we need to move forward in a positive manner.
Sure. We all want to do that. Can I ask you one question?
Yes.
You said facilitator. What kind of qualifications is that facilitator going to have and how much money are we budgeting for that?
I don't know. I think the qualification on that would be somebody that understands the issues. You had, you had a name in mind, but...
Well, I was going to see if Dr. Dwayne DeFreeze would do it from the Indian River Lagoon Council, but I can't speak for him.
I know. So we're, yeah, I'm not, I'm not talking about bringing in Andy Luck from down on the, on the bar on the riverfront to do it, no.
Be careful about bars now.
I know. Well, no, he's not at your bar. He's at one of those other ones. Okay.
Again, I can't speak for him.
I hate to, I hate to get all excited about that, but it's bothered me for a long time. I sit down, I listen to him talk about all the stuff he's found out, all the work he's doing. I see all the, I see the pile of paperwork in his office and then I read in the paper the next day that the city's doing zero. And that's not true.
Yeah, I agree with you. It's not true. But there are attorneys out there that are sue happy and there are lawsuits all over the country going on. And we don't need to be in that predicament.
I don't disagree with that at all. I don't, and...
Time is of the essence.
There was, there was a great article the other day that I read about what happens when you call the glyphosate phone number, 1-800 number, sue glyphosate. So...
And I can't wait to see the golf course get certified by the Audubon Society. That's going to be great.
Yeah, yeah. I can't wait either. Audubon, I believe, I was told in an email the other day that Audubon's now using glyphosate in their certification. So, all right, are we...
Good job, Paul.
Is there a consensus to the council that the city manager can move forward with finding a facilitator and scheduling two citizen workshops in January?
As soon as he can.
Or as soon as he can, yes.
Yes, as soon as possible.
Sure.
Consensus?
Sure.
Okay. Do you have your marching orders?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I've got a couple of comments I'd like to make.
Okay.
First, I want to say outstanding job. You were tasked with something that was no small task. It was, it was, you know, there's been a lot of public outcry over glyphosate. I completely disagree with the public on, with much of the public on whether or not glyphosate is safe or not. I think real science shows that it is, but that has nothing to do with this conversation that we're having. The conversation is, how do we maintain the assets that we have? How do we keep our citizens safe? And how do we stay, keep ourselves in compliance with South Florida Water Management Districts on these canals? You were essentially asked to go out and find alternatives, not even necessarily alternatives, but give us options for the maintenance of our waterways. That was your task and I think you did that extremely well.
Thank you.
I'm surprised by WOW, but I'm pleasantly surprised. Anytime I think that we can insert a product that is, that is more biological than, than I'm all about that. Biological doesn't always mean safe, though. There are biological agents out there that killed millions of people. But biological, safe is a good thing. So I'm very, very glad to see WOW. I'd like to see some more on that. So, you know, as I stated in my last, at the last meeting that we had on this, that I would be in favor of you pursuing the WOW and testing that and continuing to work with it while we continue to maintain our parks and our golf course through best management practices, which ultimately, best management practices is what we're going to have to get back to or we're going to lose everything. The concern I have, Paul, again, great job on everything, the concern I have is that right now we have, we have a ban on any spraying of anything in our canals. And that's a year-long moratorium on that. And if we go a year without, without any spraying in our canals, I fear that we're going to completely lose them and these numbers are going to go way, way up. So we can't just sit back and think that we can just sit here for a year and not treat our canals and think that we're not going to lose these assets because we are. In addition to that, we are going to lose our parks because there are things called selective use herbicides that need to be used in order to keep the turf, actual turf, to keep it safe for the children. There are pesticides that we need to use to keep fire ants out of our parks and other stinging insects to keep our children or the parks even usable. You know, we have haphazardly just said ban everything in our parks and in our waterways, which is fun and sweet and it's a great campaign promise, but the fact of the matter is, we have to maintain these things or we will lose them and we will spend millions and millions of dollars to try to get them back. So thank you very much. You did a great job. I look forward to these workshops. I appreciate all the hard work that you've done on this.
And get a copy of that to everybody.
I will.
Okay. All right. Thank you, guys. Okay. Let's go on to consent agenda. I would like to pull item B. Would anyone else like to pull something from the consent agenda? Anyone else? Can you turn your mic on? I can't, I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
D.
D, item D.
Yeah, and the, let's see here.
Hmm?
Yeah, just D.
Just D. Anyone else?
No. Mr. Mayor, it's different.
Okay. Can I get a motion on A, C, E, and F? I have it. You move approval?
Yes.
Okay. Vice Mayor moved approval.
Second.
Second. Okay. Let me see. There's, there's money involved in that, so let's have a voice call, please.
Vice Mayor Motti?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilliam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Paris?
Yes.
Mayor Dodd?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay. I asked to pull item B, which is our quarterly financial report. I asked that for two reasons. First, I'd like for us to, from now on, not do that in the consent agenda. I agree. If we can drop that into a regular agenda item. It just allows public input on it if someone wants to discuss it. And under the consent agenda, we can't do that, so it makes it easier. Also, on the second page, which is, is probably the third page, it's page 62 of 327. The way this reads is it sounds like that we use FEMA and hurricane payments to pay these things off. I know we didn't. What we did is we reimbursed the general fund with the money we got from FEMA because we used general fund money to pay for the hurricane replacements. I just wanted to make sure anybody out there who looked at this and saw money coming out of a FEMA payment and money going into paying all things like ex-city manager things, that we didn't use FEMA money to do that. We just, we put the FEMA money back into the general fund to reimburse the general fund for what we had spent on hurricane damage. Okay? So I just want to make sure anybody heard that. So I don't have any other questions about this. I'll move approval on item 7B.
Okay.
And you, now, let me get a second and then we can discuss it. How's that?
Okay.
Second.
All right. I have a second.
Mr. Mayor, I think it's important that when we do these quarterly budget changes, that the financial officer at least step up, give us an executive summary so the community can see what's going on with their budget. I think it's very important that they know. I mean, we get to see it here and if they don't know how to get online and look for these things, I think five minutes, you know, allocated to him to just give us a presentation would be helpful.
Yeah. And by moving into a standard agenda item, we can, we can do that, I think.
Yeah, if we can get, if we can get that today, that would be nice.
Is there, do you have any specific questions?
No, just basically I want to make sure that...
Because he's not really, I mean, I don't know if he knows what, on the fly...
Yeah, he seems okay with it.
Do you seem all right doing it? Okay.
Yeah.
You can do it from there.
Thank you. I'm Ken Kilgore, the chief financial officer. Of course, this report, because we haven't had a budget committee, but normally the budget committee gets a full presentation, probably more detail than I'll express at these meetings. But this is at the end of the year. These are unaudited numbers. Our auditors are on site, working on the audited numbers. But our general fund, we were very successful with the revenue projections. They hit it at 100%. And departments overall spent 94%. So we did get our fund balance a bit above the $5 million reserve level that we typically try to keep. The other funds, we, of course, of interest is usually the stormwater, the golf course, the airport and the building. So I do lay out in the reports where they stand. The stormwater fund did actually better than we had projected when we calculated this coming year's budget as far as what funds we could carry forward. Same thing with the golf course. Airport was just a bit lower than we had projected. And the building fund was quite a bit above what we had projected. They had a good year of collections. I also present to the budget committee, you know, detail of our projects, where they stand. That's further back in the report. We did a pretty good job, I think, this last year of completing most of the projects that were allocated. There are a few of them that we'll carry forward. Most of them associated with the major part of the project planned to be coming this year, this coming year anyway. The last thing I do is I present an investment report, giving a full description of where our funds are. Most of them are at the bank. We have a part of it at the account at the State Board of Administration, which is a pooled account that many cities and counties use to keep their money in somewhere else than one entity. And I've got a small investment in an outfit called Florida Trust, and they've done a little bit better. They can invest a little bit longer than us. They've got some good, tight restrictions and limited maturity dates, so I'm very happy with that. Other than that, I usually open it up for questions.
Any questions?
Yeah, so you said that the Stormwater Fund is pretty healthy.
Well, they are better off than we had projected they would be. There was quite a bit that was budgeted last year, particularly with the capital intention, products that were intended that didn't get accomplished during that year. You know, we started holding off on, uh, some items. So, because of that, it carried forward more the money unspent than we had originally thought.
Do you anticipate the Golf Course? It looks like the, uh, the numbers for the Golf Course are down. Are they, are you expecting?
Actually, the Golf Course numbers for the year were, uh-
Well, actually, I take that back. Yet the data-
A bit better, yes.
1.342. Um, do you expect that to increase?
Well, in our budget hearings, when we did the capital improvement program and I projected out, you know, future expenditures and future revenues, if all goes well, and it's always subject to weather conditions or other unexpected conditions, but, uh, I've shown a progressive improvement in their available reserves.
Are there any loans that the Golf Course is paying back to other funds?
Oh, yes, we are. You know, we have borrowed monies from the Building Fund.
How much was that?
That was $700,000, and we did amortize it on, you know, a scheduled payment. They are making their scheduled payment with interest, uh, so it didn't hurt the Building Fund by not having those funds in its account because there are interest earnings being credited.
Are we changing our procedures for allocating money for future reserves so that when, the last time we had to do the irrigation system when we didn't have reserves, which was a concern, do you anticipate any major renovations in the future and do we have funds set aside for that? You want to take that?
So, Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes.
So, Councilmember, we have budgeted $50,000 for some tee renovations, but we don't have any other major renovations scheduled this time. The city spent considerable dollars redoing the greens, redoing the car paths, redoing the pro shop restaurant, so we're not anticipating any major. There's some drainage improvements that the Golf Course Director would like to see that we'll have to address through the budget process, but right now, the biggest thing was getting our tees back level, and we've always looking to find a way to redo, redo something cheaper and better. There's a machine out there that will shave down the ones that aren't too far off, and we don't have to resaw it all those. We need to expand some tee boxes to change up the play a little bit and to make it more user-friendly when it's car path only, but those are all funds that are, that are basically budgeted and is operating expenses. So, I don't, I'm not anticipating anything major.
Okay. The other, last thing was the Building Fund summary. I know in the past that we've been taking occupational money through the Building Department, and then you switched it over to the General Fund, correct?
Right.
Okay. So, do you have an idea over the years how much money came into occupational licenses that stayed at the Building Department? Can you give me a rough estimate? So, I'm assuming like the occupational licenses income per year is maybe 60,000 to 80,000? Does that sound right?
No, back during the recessionary period, we did move the occupational licenses over to the Building Department. They were collected there. Since, when we could stop doing that, we moved them back to General Fund.
Right.
And we charged the clerk that's in the Building Department some of her time against General Fund so that the revenue matches the expenditures out of General Fund. Meanwhile, we did repay over the next, about three-year period of what the Building Department had gained by those license fees. So, we repaid that to the General Fund.
Right, so-
So, we are square. They never benefited from the licenses.
So, so you collected money from the businesses of the community, right? The occupational licenses that went to subsidize the Building Department because we were going through a recession and we didn't have enough money, right? And now the Building Department is flush with cash because we're pulling a lot of permits now, right? You agree? Okay.
It's good.
So, there's a lot of excess cash that's now going back into the General Fund. Would you be, would you be interested in maybe taking some of that money, the occupational license fees that's going into the General Fund and set aside to maybe the businesses in the community, like the CRA or the 512 Corridor?
I think, I think that's beyond this discussion. If you'd like to put that on the agenda for a future meeting, I think we could thoroughly talk about that.
Okay, well, that's great. That's my point. That's my point. If we can, and the other thing, the last and final thing is, this adjustment here didn't go through the Budget Committee, correct?
No, because the committee's not really in session yet, so.
Good, okay. In the future, Mr. Mayor, maybe we can get the Budget Committee, if we can have them take a look at these quarterly changes?
Well, they do look at the quarterly changes when they're in session. They just don't meet, they don't meet between the finalization of the budget and the beginning of the next year's budget cycle.
Well, I just think that anything pertaining to the budget should go through the Budget Committee. That's why we have, but thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Ken.
All right, there's a motion for approval of item number 7B. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion passes 5-0. Okay, item D. Councilmember Gilliams, you pulled that.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is in reference to the piggyback contract with Charlotte County, vehicles for replacement, six 2024 Explorer/Interceptor patrol vehicles for the Police Department, $337,874. I'm a firm believer in making sure that the Police Department has the tools and the equipment that they need to get the job done. And I did notice that they were six-cylinder vehicles, which is good, but I would like the Chief and maybe the Police Department to consider maybe one vehicle as a hybrid vehicle so that they can, their mechanics can start looking at what it would take to eventually switch over to hybrid vehicles and electric vehicles for the future. Maybe the Chief can elaborate a little on that. Just one vehicle. I see you have six of them here.
We're not really prepared for that. One of the things is, when we spoke yesterday, that we've been talking about with the Allen at the mechanic at the garage, the head mechanic, is through this next year before the budget for next year, so 2021, to start researching because when you had mentioned to me about the electric and hybrid vehicles. There are hybrid Tahos and hybrid Explorers. However, they are much more expensive than these. So, this year, we were not prepared to do that. I would prefer to wait till when we start the budget process for next year in May because we are getting at a critical level. We just had a drunk driver take out one of my patrol cars last weekend. We had another vehicle that was totaled that hasn't been replaced, so we're kind of getting at a critical area right now.
Okay, and the other thing, Chief, if I don't mind, you don't mind, Mr. Mayor?
No.
I just wanted to plant the seed. I understand it takes time, and these are now in the process. It takes six months to get these vehicles. By the way, they're not inexpensive. They're $38,000 plus $21,000 to put the electronics in them.
Correct.
So, they're very expensive vehicles. We're talking over $50,000 per vehicle, and that's a lot of money.
Absolutely.
The, um, the other concern that I had, because I did have a chance to talk to the local Ford dealership, and they looked at your, the numbers, and I talked about this at the last meeting about making sure, and I know that we're piggybacking and we're going through a certain procedure with Charlotte County and the Sheriff's Association, but they looked at those numbers and they were not impressed with the amount of discount that we're getting. So, just for future, for future, if we can sharpen the pencil and make sure that the procurement department, if they're, if they're going to go through these fleets, to make sure they shop the fleets. That's all I'm saying. And give our local companies where we support families in this community, if they can be competitive, an opportunity to bid as well.
And if I could just add, sir, when the Florida Sheriff's Association goes out for bid, as well as the Charlotte County, every entity is able to bid for that. And to my knowledge, our local businesses did not bid on that or did not win that bid. So, they have every opportunity to submit as well.
Well, they're new. They're new in the community. It's not valid anymore, so-
Right, but they were just-
And they're aware of that.
You know, changed hands and-
Sure. Chief, you've been great. Thank you so much and great job. No other questions.
Okay, I just, I just want to make sure we understand, it's easy to say I don't like their, that their prices are not that good when you don't have to bid on the RFP. So, I, I'm, I understand that, the idea about trying to get local businesses involved in it, but-
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I have, you know, thoughts about that, so. Okay, any other questions about this? This is a, do you have a motion for-
I moved, is there a motion?
No.
I moved that we approved item D.
You have a second? 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 Vice Mayor seconded that.
Thank you.
Okay, let's do a roll call.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Paris?
Here.
Mayor Dodd?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Motti?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilliams?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, let's go on to item 8A. Plane Zoning Commission. City Clerk, would you like to address this?
Yes, this is for Mr. Motti's position, which is open right now. You have two applicants, and they're both here, Mr. Cristiano and Mr. Civil, if you would like to interview them.
Okay, if you'd like to come up, Mr. Cristiano first.
I'm here.
Did I say that wrong?
That's okay. That's okay. Good evening.
Would you like to make a statement for us or questions or?
I've been interested in serving the city since I've moved here. I've got extensive experience in building and the trades, worked with planning and zoning, conservation, flood control over the years from Connecticut, and I'd be honored to serve the community.
All right. Any questions for him? No? All right, thank you. Okay, Mr. Civil?
On my application, it says Joseph. I actually go by David, is my middle name, but I graduated from the University of Florida in 1984 with a degree in real estate. I've been a real estate broker for 35 years, commercial real estate, done a lot of residential land development in Brevard County and, and quite a little bit down in Palm Beach County also.
All right.
And I love to serve the city.
Any questions for? No, thank you. Do I have a motion from anyone?
Yeah, go ahead and move motion for John.
I second that.
Okay. Cristiano.
Cristiano.
Cristiano?
Cristiano.
Eno?
Eno.
Eno, okay. I got to get the Italian in there. Do we have any other motions? All right, welcome to the Plane Zoning Commission.
Now, that's an alternate position, correct?
Yes, it's an alternate position, yes. Okay, item 8B.
I want to thank the other gentleman for applying.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for applying.
Not to give up. Thank you, appreciate that.
Okay, item 8B. This is for the, uh, the Budget Committee. I think there's two council members who have yet to appoint their members.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind.
Yes.
I, I'm having a difficult time finding the right person because I take the Budget Committee very seriously, so I spoke to the Clerk today, and I understand that meeting's not until January 7th, the first one, so there's still time. So, with your permission, I'd like to announce it later on.
Okay. I'm laughing because you wanted them to review the quarterly report. Way to go.
You like that, huh?
I like that. I think that's fine, as long as, as long as you have the, as long as you have the name in before they meet and the person's prepared to be an active member. We have had people appointed and they don't show up, so it's got to be-
Yeah, that's why I want to make sure they're committed.
And Councilwoman Ferris, do you also, have you appointed someone yet to that?
I have an appointee.
Okay, and you've given that to the Clerk so far?
I haven't.
Okay, why don't you go ahead and give it to the Clerk? You can give it to her now or you can give it to her later.
I'd like to give it to her now because I believe he's here, Christopher Berdosh, and I don't know if I'm, if you could rise, please? He is a National Analysis of Economic and Political Interests.
Okay.
Were you here, Chris? There he is.
All right, good. Okay, that doesn't require any action by the council. That's an appointment by the, by the council member, so. Yeah, okay. Did you get that?
Yes, sir, but I would like him to give me a call so I can get his contact information.
Spell out your last name.
Yes, that too.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Uh, one more thing under here. This is the, as we all know, the census is being done next year, and quite frankly, local governments, municipalities, and county governments have an awful lot vested in an accurate, complete census being done. That's how we get our fair share of all that money that the federal government gives to everybody, and it's important that we have that done. The Census Bureau has asked Andy River County, along with all the other counties in the state, to put together a census committee. Council, I mean, Commissioner Susan Adams is heading that committee for the county. We need a volunteer to be the, our initial representative to that committee who will then be involved with, working with that group in identifying volunteers to assist with the census in, inside the city of Sebastian.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I think you would be great for that position.
I second it.
I, I actually was going to ask Councilwoman Ferris if she'd like to do that. Hmm? All right, I'll do it.
Mr. Mayor, does it have to be a council-
I want to thank you for all the help you're giving me. Excuse me?
Does it have to be a council member? Can it be a person from-
Well, there will be a lot of work from the community, and the city clerk is going to be intimately involved in this, along with her staff. The issue is basically coming up with enough volunteers to assist the census takers-
Sure.
-in getting done what they need to do, and it's very important for the city that we do that. We now go to second reading of ordinance 01907. Would the city clerk like to read that, please? I mean, the city attorney like to read that, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. An ordinance of the city of Sebastian, Florida, amending the code of ordinance, Chapter 86, Article 3, by establishing a definition for recyclable materials and amending the Land Development Code, Article 22, Language and Definition, by establishing definitions and land use classifications for recycling or materials recovery facilities, and amending Article 5, zoning district regulations by establishing recycling material recovery facilities as conditional use and industrial zoning district, and amending Article 6, conditional use criteria by establishing specific conditions for recycling or materials recovery facilities, providing for repeal of conflicting provisions, severability, providing for codification, providing for scrivener's error, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. City staff?
So, Mr. Mayor, this is the second reading. We had left the ordinance in the same language that it was presented to you in the first meeting. That was the recommendation from city council to not make any changes, even though there were some that staff had recommended. So, you know, staff is asking for any other further directions. This is the time for you to talk about any additional amendments that you want to make to this ordinance and consider adopting it or leaving the existing ordinance as is.
Okay.
But that will open it up to, Ms. Frazier is here to answer any specific questions as well.
Okay, there's a, I have a couple, and I'll bring them up first. The change to item 12, Language and Definitions, it references not greater than 48 hours for operations conducted inside the building for temporarily stored outside the building. That's on page 128 of our packet.
Yes, sir.
Okay, my question is, how do we, how do we enforce that?
So, a lot of that is done through, through, not necessarily directed code enforcement, but typically those things are brought to our attention through citizen requests or complaints, and if staff or the code enforcement happens to see items that have been out there longer than that, they would be able to cite them for that violation, but we don't do specific directed enforcement. So, it is a challenge.
Okay. And the next question I have is item number four in the next section, that was also on It gives the Plane Zoning Commission the authority to allow anyone who has this conditional use to store stuff on the outside of a building, and it doesn't have any limit on that. If you tie these two back together, it might be easy to infer the 48 hours applies to that, but it doesn't say in here that it applies to that section. The only thing that defines what the authority of the P&amp;Z is, is the word adequate, and adequate's kind of one of those terms that scares me to death. You know, what does it actually mean and what, what control is there for the P&amp;Z? Having been involved in these types of hearings many times, it's, I sometimes wonder just how do I know what this means? And I'm kind of concerned about that word, adequate, as a true definition of what the P&amp;Z will use to decide if they want to allow outside storage or not. Can I get some, kind of some feedback on that?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, you want the council member to comment?
Well, yeah, I wanted to chime in on that, Mr. Mayor, because leaving it to be approved by Planning and Zoning, could that be changed to city council?
Well, let's, yeah, I don't have any, I shouldn't say this. I do have issues with that because I hate, one of the, one of the issues we try to get away from is having the city council involved in approving everything. It slows the law down.
Well, that's not that, but this is recycling.
What we should do is provide, I think, but my preference, having been both in the P&amp;Z world and on the council, my preference is that we stipulate strong enough language in the ordinance that the Plane Zoning Commission has a strategic direction from the council in which they can execute the duties without having it come to the council. It could, the council's always the appeal authority for a P&amp;Z hearing, if that takes place, but I, and I, I just personally have this thing about the council wanting to approve things. It's easier, I think, if we can define stricter definitions of what we want done and do that, but I'm certainly open to that conversation to do that.
Yeah, I just think that we're not going to have a lot of recyclable plants in the community, and anytime, anytime it affects the outside area, I just think that it should be, should be brought to council, that's all.
So, Mr. Mayor, when you and I talked, I gave this a little bit of thought, when you had talked, you and I had talked earlier about this, and I agree that that adequate is scary at best, and so I think that we can consider, one, incorporating into for the 48 hours, but also the adequate screening needs to go, and I think it needs to be a minimum of Section 54-3-14.6 or greater approved by the, if you want, the council or by the Planning and Zoning Board, but at the minimum, because if it says adequate, it could be less than 54. So, I think we need to be a minimum of 54-3-14.16 or greater- screening. And that gets us away from the word adequate or sufficient, those speculative words that, how do you, your definition of adequate and mine, and yours may be different. So I appreciate that.
Okay. And for people who don't know, 54-3, all those numbers, is our landscape code, and it defines what would be commonly referred to as a type A buffer. It's a, it's a buffer that is pretty solid, and it shields the area completely from surrounding property, correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct. And just to clarify, the use of adequate, and I'll let the city attorney correct me if I am incorrect, was in reference to, you're looking at number four, correct?
Yes.
But number six and seven say how large the area needs to be and what the screening should be. So that should be at least the minimum, if you will, of the adequate measurement.
Okay.
But I agree with you, adequate is a nebulous type of term, and if we'd like to change it, now is the time. But I would also like to remind you that conditional uses go right back to the zoning code. So you'll, the, what, if they want to ask for outside storage, it goes right back to the zoning code, which states that it is temporary, and 48 hours.
Okay.
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. The problem with all that is, if you don't understand it, you don't, you get in these circles where you think, well, gosh, one section says this, another section says that, and I'm gonna argue with it and so forth. So my preference would be that we make a modification to Section 4 to reference the fact that the Plains Zoning Commission, Plains Zoning Commission can do that, basically within the confines of number six and seven to follow, or something like that. Kind of reference, make a, base a cross-reference on that. Do you want to have any comments about that?
And if I may, Mr. Mayor, you want to incorporate the 48 hours in four as well?
Yes, I do.
And I think that, if I may, is that, I think you remove the adequate, and you say, it's provided together with screening, and consistent with 54-3-14.16 or greater, as approved during the site plan process. I think that that gets us at least what the minimum code is, and if it is significantly higher, or something that needs to be done to screen whatever's out there, it gives them an opportunity to do that without a kickback.
Right. Is that a motion? Was that a motion?
Yeah, that's a motion.
One second. Okay. I'll tell you, my objective is not to end up with what the county has behind the landfill off of Rosen Road.
Yes, sir.
That's my objective. And I thoroughly, recycling, I mean, I'm a gigantic advocate of the Sustainable Sebastian Initiative, and one of the things about that is for us to make recycling easier for everybody. And so recycling is a core business that we'd like to see here, but I don't want to see us have what's behind the land, the drop-off station there off Rosen Road. So if... So is anyone having comments about those changes? Okay. We have a, the motion is that we approve this as submitted with the modifications to item number four on page 128, in which the word adequate is removed, and references are made to items six and seven, and the 48-hour period. Correctly state that?
We're gonna have to come up with some exact language.
Yeah.
Can I have a caucus for me? So, my holiday and attorney experience says that we probably ask you to defer this to a time certain at the next meeting, so that we can get the language the way you want it. Because this is the last reading, we won't have an opportunity to tweak it today.
Okay.
And to make it correct. So I think it's prudent upon us to do the right thing and make sure that we get the language the way it needs to be, and that you pass it without any nebulous in us thinking, this is what you thought, and we pass it and it codifies.
I'll remove my motion at the second, we'll remove the second. All right. Now I'll make a second motion, that we defer this item until our meeting in January the 11th, I believe is the date, right?
January 8th.
8th. I mean, on January 8th.
All right.
And the staff will return it as modified. Then we have a second on that. Okay. All in favor of that? Signify by a aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Nay? None. Motion passes. Okay. Now we're on to item 10A, which is, and actually, I believe we tabled this item at our last meeting. So I am gonna move, we remove item 10A from the table to be reconsidered. Do I have a second on that?
Just a second.
All right. All in favor, signify by a aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say a aye. All right. It's off the table and ready to be reheard. I think at the time, there were some questions from Councilmember Gilliams. I'll defer to you then.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I gotta commend, the information that they provided is a lot more detailed now. And I appreciate you putting the lease agreement and everything else in the paperwork. I see there was an expense for picking up those machines, and I saw the credits and how that worked out. So that was good. I appreciate that. I do want to see eventually, I know that the technology's there, and I know it's a different company, to track who uses these machines and how many copies they put on them, if and when it becomes a problem. So, but aside from that, Mr. Mayor, I'm very satisfied. I would have liked to have seen the, being that it's a manufacturing company, they should have gave us a better rate per copy, whereas the third-party vendors were giving us a lesser rate. But I understand that the service makes up for it, I hope, and that the city staff doesn't have any issues. And I see that they're willing to be there within an hour, replace the machine if necessary. So, Mr. Mayor, I'll go ahead and move to approve.
All right. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this? Say none. All right. We have a motion. Do I have a second? I'll second that motion. Okay. The motion is that we approve item 10B as submitted by staff. It has been seconded. All in, oh, this is a dollar amount. Real call, please.
Mayor Dodd?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mahdi?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilliams?
Yes.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Paris?
Yes.
And I have to correct that motion. It's item 10A, not 10B.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Now, 10B. I asked the city manager to bring this back. This is in response to email he received from the Indian River County Mosquito Control District. He advised them of our moratorium on spraying, and they responded back to him with their response. And we're gonna, we can have discussion on this, but I'm gonna make a motion so we can discuss it. My motion is that I move that spraying done by or on behalf of the Indian River County Mosquito Control District be exempt from the city moratorium approved on 11/20/19.
Second it.
All right. So I have a motion and a second. Now we can discuss if we'd like. Do you want to have any comments on that?
Well, I, Mr. Mayor, I know that the health department of the state of Florida had some issues, if I'm not mistaken. Can they just elaborate a little on that, so that the public knows?
Well, it, there's a real question as to whether we even have the authority to tell them not to do that. And they were, actually, they were pretty nice in their response back. They didn't question that, and didn't challenge us with anything.
Right.
And so I think, since there is some question about the legalities of us trying to tell them they can't spray, and it is their responsibility to do that, I think that the safest measure for us, without getting into a ticking contest between the state, would be to release them from the moratorium and let them know we've done that.
Okay.
And, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Carlson from the Mosquito Control would like to say a few words to the board, if that's a...
That's perfectly acceptable. Mr. Carlson, would you like to come forward?
Given the very nice motion that you made, I don't really think there's too much for me to say, other than, we were the first mosquito control district created in Florida back in 1925. We've been servicing the Sebastian area, along with much of the rest of Indian River County, for all these years. We serve a public health, as well as a nuisance control function. And we look forward to continuing to work with the city of Sebastian to provide these services on an ongoing basis. You know, we did point out in the, in the email that we have this year had a tremendous amount of West Nile virus activity, not just in Indian River County, but statewide. Since the middle of the past summer, we have been under a mosquito-borne illness advisory in regards to this. So periodic mosquito spraying is part of the way to approach trying to subdue outbreaks of this sort. So with that said, I don't want to take up much of your time, but thank you for this consideration.
Any questions?
One quick question. How often do you spray, and when do you spray?
We spray on a need basis.
Okay.
Went back and looked at the records before coming here this evening, and we sprayed the city of Sebastian area five times this year in 2019. And if you look at the last five to seven years, we've done it from three to about 10 times in a year. It's all based on surveillance. We do appreciate phone calls from the public when they think the mosquito numbers are high. We have to justify, though, legally, in order to be able to spray that there truly is a mosquito nuisance, so.
And my other question was, what do you spray?
We use a material called permethrin, which is very common in the household insect sprays. It is probably the most common mosquito adulticide, spraying for adult mosquitoes in the country. So we're right in the middle of using, again, and all of the product, any of the products that we have, that we use have to be certainly approved by the EPA. We fall under the Florida Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services as far as our operation. So we have a lot of people looking over our shoulder, but it's for a good reason, and we recognize that.
Thank you very much for being here.
Could I ask where you get the statistics on the West Nile virus? I've heard contrary.
On the information you have in front, that's all from the Department of Health.
Okay.
So we have had 68, I believe, positive chickens here this year in Indian River County, and statewide, it's a little over 700. We have one of the sentinel chicken flocks, as is shown on page two of your handout, about 250 yards to the west of this building. So we're getting good information here in the city of Sebastian. And of that 68 positive chickens, nine of them were from this flock here right off of Powerline Road. The reason that chickens are used for detecting for some of these mosquito transmitted viruses is that the viruses are carried by birds, and transmitted from bird to bird by a particular mosquito, and occasionally to man. So for many years, mosquito control programs around the state and beyond have what's called sentinel chicken programs, where we have chickens out in the field, blood samples are taken weekly, and a state lab analyzes them to see if they have been exposed to the virus. So it's a, very helpful in helping us know whether there is a background level of activity or an active year. This is a very active year.
Any more questions?
Thank you.
I just think we have to do this. It's just, you know, us cleaning up a knee-jerk reaction, based on completely no knowledge, and potentially endangering the citizens of Sebastian. So thank you very much for being here, and I look forward to removing this moratorium.
Okay. So we have a motion that we remove, basically, the spraying that's done on, by or on behalf of the Indian River County Mosquito, or Indian River Mosquito Control District, from our moratorium that we put into effect on 11/20/19. It's been seconded. This... Excuse me? You have a question?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have a...
Oh, okay.
So, if I could ask that you amend that motion to include the larvicide and adulticide and the BT that they use, because they don't just spray, they use larvicides and adulticides, and they use BT bacterial.
Okay. So why don't I, why don't I amend my motion to, that treatment done by or on behalf of, then that includes everything, right?
Thank you. I'm sorry.
Without getting too detailed on all that.
I just want to make sure that we don't get ourselves...
Okay. Any questions on that?
Thank you, sir.
All in favor, signify by a aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Carry's five zero. Okay. Now we're on to item 11A. Item 11A, and I know I mess up your name every time I say it. Betta, right?
That's correct.
Okay. I didn't, man, I got it right. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, if we can have, like, maybe two or three minutes, just break, so I can hand out some exhibits that I want to give you guys before the presentation, and I can sit up first? Like, two, three minutes break?
Okay. We're gonna take a five-minute break.
Wait, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Hold on one second. He's giving out exhibits that would not be available to...
He's our attorney.
I understand that, but if we're gonna have a, if we're gonna have a hearing here, I would think that the gentleman that we're having the hearing about should have access to the information we have.
Councilmember, I have plenty of exhibits for everyone, including the council, the clerk, and the, in this case, Mr. Bedea.
Okay. Then, Mr. Mayor, may I proceed on one other item?
What's that?
Because I'm looking at the transmittal here, and I see that we're going to have a hearing. And it says, consider the removal of an individual until the issue is resolved. But the issue's been resolved. And, you know, it's been resolved in a positive manner. So I'm not sure why we're even having this hearing.
The council, prior to your being made part of the council, had directed the city attorney to actually remove him.
I read that.
And he's asked for a hearing for us to reevaluate that and to change that designation.
But that was before the, what transpired.
The actions of the previous council are valid.
I understand that.
Therefore, we have, in order for us to, in order for us to override the actions of the previous council, we have to have a hearing in which he asks us to do that. And then we can vote to allow him to stay on the, on the committee without a problem.
Well, I just don't want to put somebody through a hearing when it's not necessary, when there, there's, there's no guilty here, there is withheld adjudication, and I just think it would, it's not proper to treat our volunteers in this capacity. I just think it's wrong. And that's the previous council.
If you would like, if you would, let me, let me do this the right way. If you would like to make a motion that we forego the hearing, and that we reinstate Mr. Bennett to the Natural Resources Board position...
So be it. I make a motion that we forego the hearing and reinstate Mr. Bennett.
Do we have a second on that?
Do you understand?
I'll second it.
For discussion?
Okay. So, any comments, anybody on the council on that?
So, I'll wait my turn. I'm sorry.
Any comments, anybody on the council on that? Okay. All right. I don't...
Okay. So, let me tell you the reasons why. Because I don't want to put our volunteers through this if it's not necessary. You know, I read the plea form.
Okay. If you're gonna, if you're gonna present the evidence, we need to have a hearing.
I'm not gonna present the evidence. I'm not gonna present the evidence, but what I'm saying here...
Councilmember Gilliams, sir, you, sir. Your motion is we forego the hearing. You don't need to say anymore. We can vote on that.
But I want to give, I want to give the members, I want to give the members up here a reason to vote with me, and the reason why, in case they missed it in the packet. Because there's a lot of stuff here. And I want to emphasize that there's no, there greeted no contest.
Mr. Gilliams, do you know that adjudication without guilt, it doesn't mean...
You can do that. You can do that.
You know that very well.
But if you're saying forego the hearing...
You're not the mayor, he's the mayor. Please.
If you're saying forego the hearing, and we, the vote is basically that we don't hear the evidence, we just agree with you. So that vote needs to take place first.
Are we in discussion?
No, we're not. Yeah, we're in discussion. But I'm, I'm not gonna let you introduce evidence that we would introduce in the hearing, because your motion is that we forego the hearing. Since your motion is that we forego the hearing, then we need to either not have the hearing, or we need, or we need to act, in order to have the hearing, we need to act on that motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd call the roll.
All right. Let's call the roll, please. The motion is that we forego the hearing, and that we authorize Mr. Bennett to continue in his position on the Natural Resources Board.
Okay. Vice Mayor Mahdi?
I wrote yes. Let him continue.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
Councilmember Gilliams?
Yes.
Councilmember Hill?
No.
Councilmember Paris?
Yes.
And Mayor Dodd?
Yes. All right. That's settled. No hearing?
No hearing. Thank you for your service, sir. We appreciate you volunteering for our community. Thank you.
Okay. Now, let's get on to item number, is it on the right page here? Item number 13A.
13C.
No, 13A.
Oh, wait a minute. You're right. I'm sorry. You're right.
Public input's 12. I don't want to go past that.
12, 12. You're right. 12.
Number 12, public input. If anyone from the public would like to address the council, I will tell you that, on the advice of our attorney the last time, we're gonna go back to our, our time limit, and we're not gonna address and have discussions with the individuals that come forward. If any member would like to address something that the, that was brought up in public input, they can do under their matters. If, if it's appropriate, I may ask them to get a card from the city manager, so they can contact him on issues. Okay. Ma'am, name and, if you would, your name and your address for us, the record. I don't think that speaker's working. Is it?
I don't know.
There it is. Now it is.
Okay. Under ring, 407, Querling, Sebastian, here in Sebastian. My roads are being paved right now, and I have complained about our quarter round and water in the quarter round for years now. And finally... And finally, since our roads are being paved, somebody came out to look at the issue and found that the city has not been cleaning out the pipes underneath tulips, and that has caused all the water to back up into our quarter rounds, which has caused a lot of vegetation to grow. We have gotten, I don't know, I guess they're not the tickets, but we have been gotten paper telling us it's our job to clean out the quarter rounds, okay? This, I have been up here years ago complaining about the water staying in, and nobody has done anything. Finally, because I really made a you-know-what of myself, I had a city person come out and clean out the pipes underneath tulip. I now would like the city to come out and help us clean out the quarter rounds, because they are still full of vegetation, due to the fact that the city has not done its job to clean out the pipes underneath tulip jobs. I also would like to make sure that you do clean these pipes out a minimum of once a year, please. Get that on the schedule to have it done. I was told it was our responsibility to call him and let him know that the pipe was full. Yeah, I don't think so. I don't know when things need to be done. So, two things, put it on yearly, clean out, please, and help us clean out our current quarter round that is overgrown with vegetation. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir? Yeah, but don't put your hands too far up on the podium. I think that's the, that's, there's kind of a shorten in there or something, I don't know.
Okay, Ben Hocker, City of Sebastian. The young lady that was just up here referring to the paving and the roads that are being done in that given area, I would like maybe your council members, as you're driving around through the city, to take a ride down those roads. They were repaved, but nothing was leveled on it. You go down Main Street when we did it, it's a smooth road. It's like a roller coaster on those side roads. It was just an application of blacktop with no leveling of the roadways, and you'll see what I'm talking about if you're in that area riding around. Second, you had an item here talking about the recycle, you didn't open it to public hearing or public speaking, and there was another one here, which you just finished, and you didn't open it up to the public.
Yeah, that one we just finished was not, we didn't do that.
I know you didn't do it, but there were two prior to that. And then a comment on your consent agenda, on the back of it, it says, "If it's pulled, my interpretation is I could have raised my hand and spoke against or for either one." Your paperwork, maybe I read it wrong, but it says I could raise my hand and I'd be noticed, recognized. Again, thank you, but take a ride down those roads, and you'll see what I'm talking about.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? The young lady right there first, and then, Dr. Cox, I think you'll be next, okay? Because you raised your hand first.
Linda Kenshin, Delmar Street, Sebastian, Florida. Being a city council member is an honor and a privilege awarded to you all by the residents of Sebastian, and so I would like to take this chance to tell you that you should know and expect that everything you do and you say are under a microscope 24 hours a day, whether it be publicly, privately, or on social media. So if you're going to call the residents of Sebastian names, or if you're not going to pay your taxes up to date, you don't belong up there. Give a public apology for the name-calling and pay the taxes that are overdue in the amount of over $33,000. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Cox? No, 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 no applause.
I think I paid my taxes.
Good.
My name is Graham Cox, I live at 1213 George Street in Sebastian. I know at the start of this discussion today, on the, on the manager's report on glyphosate and whatever, you said you're going to have a public meetings in, in January, February. I got six pages of comments in detail about the report, and I leave it to your decision as to whether we present those comments tonight, if I can, or whether we wait until January, February and present them all.
I, I would bring them, I think it would be more appropriate to do that at the public I don't know.
What, what I'd like to do, Mr. Mayor, is, if it's permissible, is at least submit a copy of this to go in the minutes, so that the manager knows what kinds of issues and questions we've raised, in the interest of making it a better report, not to say it's, it doesn't work. I think the thing in this comments could make it a much better report.
Okay, if you would like to provide that to the city clerk, the city clerk can, actually can distribute a copy of that to the council members and to the city manager.
Good.
It, it's, it's not going to be officially placed in the minutes, but she can distribute a copy of that, and then we can go from there.
Okay.
Okay. I do know that the city manager did ask for input, and I do know that he didn't get a whole lot of input from very many people, so it's appreciative that you're actually providing some input, so it would be nice to get that.
We've only had a copy of it for a few days.
Yeah, no, I'm talking about during the process of putting it together.
I will say about the manager's presentation, that he has presented information up on the screen that is not in the report, and it adds considerably to the, to the quality of it, to be able to include that information. So is there a mechanism we can have that will take what the manager had to say, maybe a transcript of what he had to say, and circulate that fairly quickly, because he does change some of the critique that we have at the report?
I'll tell you what, I, I think it would be appropriate to put the city manager's slides on the city website.
Okay.
You have a problem with that? Yeah, it'd be appropriate to put those on the city website, and a copy of the report on the city website as well.
There was more in the, in the explanation of things. I really support the idea of having a facilitated, facilitated or moderated sort of discussions in January, February, where you're, the idea of Dwayne DeFreeze being the moderator, I think that would be fantastic, but Dwayne's a busy boy, and whether he'll do that, I don't know. As I said, my comments are designed to make this a better report, so it gets into considerable detail as to how we could do that, and, and I really want to make sure that we solve the problems that are listed. What concerns me is that we really need to have an integrated pest management plan for each of the areas, for the golf course, for the parks, and for the canal.
That's exactly...
And, and the main, the first two steps of that are public education program, to let people know what the issues are, and the second is a citizen advisory committee that's going to work, because this is for the long haul.
Well, we have a citizens advisory committee already that deals with these issues. That committee's the Natural Resources Board.
And I'm, my next point is to make better use of the Natural Resources Board, to do this kind of work.
We intend to do that.
Thank you.
We intend to do that, and I, I don't think there's anything you're saying that's, that's not exactly what's going to happen with the city manager's attention to do that. So if you'd provide a copy of your comments to the city clerk on, on your way back?
I'll do that right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to approach? Yes, sir?
Thank you.
My name's Klessen Heeman, and I'm at 182 Columbus Street, and I wanted to say that the post that was put into the Sebastian Daily, I found it to be very, very disrespectful and very hurtful, calling people fat and making fun of them, and calling people obese and making fun of them, and making fun of people who come from the north. I find that to be very disrespectful from the council to, to put something like that. What, what's going to be next, you start making fun of the disabled? I would be open to hearing some opinions.
Well, that didn't come from the council.
Do you find that appropriate?
That didn't come from the council, but thank you for your comments.
It was classified information, I never said those things.
We're going to, we're going to let you, if you'd like to deal with that, when you get to your comments, how's that? Okay, that, that, thank you for the, for your input. That didn't come from the council, though, but thank you for your input.
So it never come from one of these, one of the people sitting up here?
Well, you have to, address me, okay, if you would, and if there's, if there's something that one of the council members wants to talk about during their matters related to an issue like that, then they're certainly welcome to do that. And, I mean, I read the report just like you did.
So are you saying it's fake news?
Hmm?
So it, it never happened, is what you're claiming?
Okay, let's, let's let her respond to that during their matters. All right, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes.
I'm not trying to be dismissive, but we can't get into a back and forth on that type of stuff during the, during the public comments, it doesn't productive, we'll have an opportunity to talk about that later. Sir, you were going to say something?
Yes, John Denise, 164 Copley Terrace. I'm just, I, first, I'd like to compliment the city manager on his report this evening. I'm glad to see that the city is addressing that. I am concerned, though, about our parks. The last few years, I think we've done an exceptional job, and it's proud to be from Sebastian for the last 30-plus years. This summer, I stood away a little longer than normal, six weeks, and I came home to find my yard, my lot, just not recognizable, and I had to spend a lot of time going out there, got bit by fire ants, and getting it back to normal. I'm afraid that if we're not going to do anything for the next few months, our parks might look like my property did when I came back, and I'm concerned about our youth. I've been involved in coaching for almost 60 years now, and I, the parks should be enjoyed by our youth, and we shouldn't have to worry about them getting bit, and, like I said, I, I got spoiled by what I seen here, and coming home to my property after six weeks away, I realized I can't be away six weeks no more, no more, and I'm afraid six more weeks of not doing anything. Our baseball fields and football fields and tennis courts, my own bias, are not going to look the same, and I'm just concerned about that.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Ma'am?
Hello, I'm Diana Bolton, and I'm a resident of George Street in Sebastian, and I want to just say thank you to Paul Carlisle, city manager, for his very detailed presentation. And I just wanted to talk real quick, because it didn't come up in discussion, about item 10B on the spraying and the treatment of mosquitoes. I had some questions, and I was wondering if the gentleman that spoke earlier, if he was still available.
No, I don't, yeah, we can't revisit that.
Okay, all right, and I just wanted to say that I, you had mentioned BT fungus, BT, that's a biocontrol, and that's excellent, that's really, I've done a lot of research on that, and it's a very good, biocontrols are great ways of, of controlling insects, and if you spray, it contradicts the biocontrols, so I just want to say I'm, I'm really pleased that you are looking into that, and that, that really gives me a lot of optimism about where we're headed. I would like to know if it's possible, if there's a mechanism where, in other areas where I've lived, in Monroe County and on the West Coast, where there's a lot of heavier spraying than is necessary here, is if we can be put on some kind of hotline for when they are going to spray, so we can close up our houses. For some people, that's important, and we do need that mechanism.
Are you, are you talking about mosquito spraying?
I personally am very sensitive to the spray, and I would like to be able to close up my house. If there's a mechanism by when they are doing the spraying, that we can...
Talking about the mosquito spraying?
Mosquito spray, yes, I'm talking about mosquito spraying.
When you communicate to the board that they're, that we've changed that, maybe you could ask them to provide the city some notification for spraying, we could post it on our city website, maybe? How's that?
I will, I will talk to Mr. Carlson about it, I guess, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and I just wanted to let you all know that when I heard about the West Nile scare, I have a little bit of background in mosquito control, not a lot, but I know about the Sentinel Chickens, and I don't, I, when I looked it up on the health site, although the Sentinel Chickens may have been showing up positive for West Nile, West Nile only has about an 80%, 80% of the people that get it don't even know they've had it. And then the 20% that do, it's just a mild cold or flu, so not to panic if you think that you might be affected by West Nile. And also, I looked up the statistics in the state of Florida as far as who has gotten West Nile, and there's only one case in all the state of Florida that came up with it from the health department, and that was in Jacksonville. So there was only one case in the whole state of Florida of a human getting West Nile, I think in the last year, or whenever the last data was available, and that means your chances, because there's 21 million people in state of Florida, your chances of getting West Nile are only one chance in 21 million, so you're better off getting, buying a lottery ticket. So not to panic. And the other thing is, if all the residents would keep the standing water to a minimum, I'm a Florida cracker six generations, so we all know, you don't walk around at dawn or dusk unless you're fully covered up, and you make sure and you tip all your standing water if it rains. And if that, you do that, you won't have a big problem with mosquitoes or be discomfort, or uncomfortable by them. And since we're not in rainy season, this is not mosquito season, it's usually more in the rainy season, so just keep the standing water out and cover up, and don't walk around at night at dawn or dusk unless the wind is blowing. If the wind is blowing, mosquitoes can't fly that fast. Thank you, that's all I wanted to say, and thank you for the great job you guys are doing.
Thank you.
And thank you for your presentation, Mr. Carlisle. Thanks.
Ma'am?
Hello.
Hi. Would you state your name?
My name is Marlene Burke, and I live at 181 somewhere, Dickens Avenue, Sebastian, Florida. I want to compliment the city manager on that wonderful report, and I just would ask if, when he puts it on the website, if he could put the years that the research was done at the universities. I do a lot of professional reading in, in my job, and I'd just like to know if these are current research projects, or if they've got some history. But what I'm here tonight to talk about is the city hiring the services of a specialized consultant to help with the major decisions of annexation.
Okay, we're going to, that's the next item on the agenda, that's not a public input item, so you'll be able to address that?
I can't talk, after...
No, you'll, you'll be able to address that when, when that comes up.
Very good, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else for public input? Okay, see none. The...
Mr. Mayor?
Somebody say something, yeah.
We have recessed, like five minutes.
All right, make a motion. Recession five minutes, I'll second it. All in favor? Aye. I asked the city clerk to place a checklist in front of your positions. We all got the resumes from the individuals and firms that applied for the position of city attorney. And what I'd like to do, if it's possible, is to have you mark your first three or four choices. Mark the individual names ranked one through four on that checklist based on the resumes that you received. I'm hoping you've had an opportunity to look through those, and that what we can do is come up with a list of maybe the top three that we have a consensus on, and ask the city clerk then to arrange a time between now and our next meeting in which we can have one-on-one interviews for each council member to interview the applicants, the top three applicants. And we can make a selection from that. Does that sound like a reasonable approach?
Just a question. You wanna rate the highest one, two, and then three?
Yes.
So the one will be rated for the highest. Yeah, I mean, I don't have a problem doing that with what we have here. I would like to say, if I could, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I think that we are really shortchanging this process quite a bit. I mean, we basically are looking at six resumes and a couple of companies that are applying for this job that we're gonna be paying over $100,000 a year for, and I think that when we're not going through the proper process, which I really think we need to get in touch with, like a Colin or someone like that, to do a search for a quality candidate, you know? The Colin Benziger, if you recall, brought us Paul Carlisle, which was fantastic. And I don't think we've done a whole lot of due diligence in the hiring here. I, you know, just really, this is all we've got to look at, folks. It's like eight resumes.
Yeah.
And this is a pretty damn good job, so I think I would like to see us go forward with this process and get some more resumes in here so we can look at. I'd be happy, probably, with one of these, but probably isn't good enough when we're looking for a charter officer that's gonna be making this kind of money.
Hey, Bill.
I disagree. I think that, looking at the applicants, I think there's capable individuals here with qualifications that I think are doable. We have one that we retained just for the Audubon suit. And I, I mean, I was looking over their paperwork, and they're right here looking us in the eye. Now, that's a firm now. I'm not sure how you guys feel about the, an individual as an in-house attorney. I'd like to hear what you guys expect out of your attorney. I know what I would like to expect, but maybe we can go down the row one by one and say what you're looking for. You know, the fact that, I mean, I don't mind starting it off. The fact that we already have a firm that's representing us now that has seventy attorneys, that if we get into any issues, litigation issues, we can pick a professional from that firm that will be able to handle, and the price will be already negotiated. If we go with an individual or somebody in-house and they can't handle the litigation, that means we have to go outside and hire a law firm, which I looked at, I looked at ten years of attorney bills and litigation bills, and I got a good idea of how much the city's spending yearly. And I think if we negotiate the right price, the right price per hour with certain stipulations, I think that we have one looking us right in the face. But, you know, I'm open to discuss what the other council members would like to do. I just think that, know what you're looking for. We want, we don't, we want a firm that's professional, that's gonna keep us out of litigation. That's what happens when you don't have an experienced law firm, that don't have a minimum of ten years of government experience, board certified. And I think that we have one right here that's representing us, and I think maybe we should consider... At the last meeting I was at, Mr. Stokes says he was ready to leave, and he's, I understand he's out today because he's got some medical issues. I'd like to retain the firm that you guys already picked on a month-to-month basis while we do the search. I'm not saying we have to take him, but I think we should relieve Mr. Stokes so he can attend his medical stuff. He said he didn't mind leaving at the last meeting that I was at.
No, he's willing to stay. And I don't, you know, I personally don't see any need for us to retain an interim. If we were gonna retain an interim, I would be all in favor of going through these eight firms and finding somebody.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor.
The question was asked, not whether, we're not up here to debate, you know, who we're gonna hire right now. We're up here talking about, about a simple discussion about rating the top three. My question was that, do we have enough applicants? Not going on some ridiculous tangent about, you know, discussing whether or not we should go with a firm or with a person. If you want a firm, rate the firm your best, and let's move on. I mean, if you wanna just talk, that's fine, too. I understand your deal, but, you know, the question was, do we have enough to work with here? Mr. Gilliam clearly thinks we do. Great. I don't. And if the council, if it's the pleasure of the council, I'll be glad to rate the top three, like I said.
All right. Vice Mayor Balty, what do you think?
I've got a question. Is this, are there any other applicants that presented to the town? Or is this the total amount?
That's all.
That's all?
Yeah. Do you have any thoughts beyond that?
I would have, I would have liked to seen some more applicants. I do agree with Mr. Gilliam, but I think I would have seen, like to have seen more applicants presented to us.
Okay. Ms. Barrett?
I think the resumes I reviewed and the applications were impressive, and I think we have plenty of material to choose from here, and I think it's important to retain a permanent attorney for the city.
Mr. Mayor, we already have a firm that's representing us. What's wrong with releasing Mr. Stokes, retain one of their other lawyers at a stipulated price so we keep everything under one roof, try them out while we're, so Jim can get the opportunity to look at other applicants, and the other members can look at other applicants, but we have somebody who's handling our day-to-day operations and not having fill-ins?
I'll tell you what's wrong with that.
Okay. Help me out.
I asked Mr. Stokes to do some research for me, and he just, I'll give you one example. Miramar retained, Miramar went from an in-house attorney to a firm, and they anticipated, under the agreement that they signed, that they were gonna spend $135,000 a year. At the end of their first year, they had spent $245,000, and they were having to budget almost $300,000 for the next year. Firms, you have very little control sometimes over what a firm bills. And I understand that you think that we can build an ironclad contract. I've had enough experience in, a ton of experience in contracts with legal firms, and I've never seen an ironclad contract that a lawyer were right, that applies to himself. So I'm not, I'm not in favor of a firm. There's another reason I'm not in favor of a firm. The city has a lot of stuff that needs to be done that is not being completed. I can go through all kinds of examples. Our code enforcement procedures and code needs to be rewritten. We have a lot of code in the land development code that needs to be rewritten. We have a growth management department that is stressed at the most right now in trying to get done what they've gotta get done. They have to complete a, a complete rewrite of the comp plan in the next year. They have to do stuff. My preference would be to have an on-staff attorney who basically spends twenty percent of his time or thirty percent of his time being the council's attorney, and the rest of his time being the city's staff, I don't know, we'll call him whatever we wanna call him, staff attorney, but he can assist in writing land development code definitions. He can assist the growth management department in doing stuff. There's a lot of things that can be done by that attorney in a full-time position that will make it better, actually, to do that. So I'm not in favor of a firm for that reason. I am, I am in favor of hiring an individual rather than a firm. But I agree with Councilmember Hill. I mean, we, assuming we list our rank, no matter how many resumes we get, we can get fifty. I think the last time we did this, Jim, we got, I don't know, we had a stack of resumes this tall. And the interesting thing was that when we put down our first, second, third, and fourth choices, I don't know that there was a ton of difference between the individual council members on what they picked out of that group.
Right.
There wasn't a ton of difference between that. So, and, I mean, I may have, I may have picked one person number two. I may have picked another person number, and Councilmember Hill may have made them number three, but in reality, when we got right down to it, there was like five names that came out in that top four out of that whole group of resumes. I personally, and I understand the position, or the position that Councilmember Hill is expressing, but I personally see a couple of resumes in here that I feel like are very impressive. And if it's possible to come to a conclusion that we could hire one of those two people, and if we can do a contract with them, I'd be very satisfied with them. And so for that purpose, I'm, I'm ready to move forward with this. If we can't come to a consensus, if we meet on the eighth of January or before, because what we really should do with this is we should interview and make a decision that night for the interview process rather than carry it out, but if we can't come to a conclusion, then we can always open it back up again. We're not required that we hire someone because we interviewed three people.
So, Mr. Mayor, I didn't say sign up a firm. What I said was, on a month-to-month basis with a stipulated price, while we're in the process of researching and doing this procedure, we already been, this firm's been recommended by Mr. Stokes. If you, if you read their application, you will see, you will have access to a premier law firm. If we can work it out where there's no fee for traveling, a fee of $225, $200 an hour, you will see that your average bills are gonna not exceed $120,000 a year. Let me give you an example. Hold on one second. Let me give you an example. Because I checked one of these applications where they, right here in our backyard, they work for the city of West Melbourne, in the Atlantic, I think it is.
West Melbourne has a city, has a attorney, yes.
Okay, and also in the Atlantic. And I asked them, what's your bills for the year with this attorney? She says it's been, and I said for the past five years. She says about $55,000, $60,000. Now, here's the caveat. They only have one meeting a month. We're gonna have two. But that covers all resolutions, all ordinances, you know, you, listen, you don't wanna shortchange yourself and find that you get an attorney, and then you have to go get another law firm because they can't handle litigation. Keep it under one roof. Let's try them out on a month-to-month basis. Let's see how it works out, and then let's do what, Jim? Get, put the call out for more applications, but at least we have somebody in-house that's working side by side on the annexation lawsuit at the same time. They can be working together and getting the job done for us at the same time. I just don't think that, you know, having an in-house attorney, you're gonna find out, it's gonna cost you more money in the long run.
See, I don't know that's the history.
So, Mr. Mayor, I would like to look for more, however I'm reasonable, and we'll go and choose one of the three or make a notation as to which three I feel are the top ones, or however you wanna do it. Mr. Gilliam wants to fire the city manager, I mean, the city attorney, and stay with, and hire a firm without even having discussions on coming up with contractual negotiations or anything for any type of retainer. So that's where we are with us, too, and so I will take your direction now.
Okay.
I didn't say fire Jim. That's misleading.
I'm sorry. Relieve him. Relieve him.
I've talked to Mr. Stokes, and he's, he's...
He had indicated at that meeting he's ready to go. He's got medical issues.
He has no problem staying here.
And to be quite frank, I think it's a conflict of interest because we're in this litigation because our hearings were not properly followed.
That's absolutely untrue.
Okay. Well, we got sued, did we not?
Okay. And you're wanting me to hire the... And you're wanting me to hire the firm that says that that statement you just made's a lie? And you're saying now we should hire that firm?
No, that's not what I'm saying.
I see that almost as a...
What I'm saying is, we need to be smart about this.
Well, the smart thing from your perspective would not tell me that their firm can't write a legal document and you want to hire them.
I did say that.
That's what you said. You just said that we're in that mess because we didn't do a proper firm and that the lawyer from that firm said we did.
No, that's not what I'm referring to. I'm referring to when we had the hearings on the annexation, that if the hearings were followed properly, we would not be getting sued.
The hearings were followed properly and the attorney from the firm that you're asking that we hire is the one that said that.
Mr. Mayor, point of order. We can't have this discussion.
No, we can't have this discussion.
Because of our legal advice and from our attorney and from the executive session, we cannot have this conversation.
All right, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask that each of you indicate your top three choices on this list. And then we're going to compile a list. We're going to ask the city clerk to put together one-on-one interviews with the top three choices.
Sounds great.
Okay. And if you have those now, if you can provide them to me?
I'd like to make them a public record. Can we get that on the record, please?
Get what on the record?
Everybody's choices.
The names of the choices, once I get that back?
Oh, okay.
Top three. Jim, do you have? Can you do it now so I can come up with a numbers?
Oh, sure.
Do you have any problem with that? Okay, looking at this list, Manny Anan was, is, the top three in the combined choices have three votes or four votes. That's Gary Oldoff, David Migget, Maggot? I think I remember how to say that name once today and forgot it. Migget and Manny Anan. The next vote was two and that was for Philip Sheridan. So those three, those four, would Philip Sheridan be the fill-in if one of the top three refuses to come back in? Okay, so that would be Manny Anan, David Migget, Gary Oldoff. And then if one of those three refuses to come, then Philip Sheridan. And if we can set up a date, availability of the council probably with the holidays coming up would be the first week in January. Does that sound reasonable?
Well, before we go any further, can we get the clerk to verify the count? I trust you, but people make mistakes and I just want to verify. Can we get the clerk to verify that?
Sometimes you...
Don't, don't, I'm entitled to verification. I'm entitled to verification.
Would you please verify the account, please?
Thank you.
I dislike it when people think I'm dishonest because I'm not.
No, I didn't say that. I did say that, Mr. Mayor. I said, I just want to verify that you didn't make a mistake. That's all.
Oh, man, it's grating sometimes.
Don't take it personal.
Very grating.
You know what Ronald Reagan said? Trust but verify.
Yeah, well, look what Ronald Reagan did to the economy.
Oh, God.
He verified it. And that's what put Bill Clinton in office.
If you can just give us the count and the number from the top to the bottom, I would appreciate it. And if you can separate, if you can separate the firm to individual, I would appreciate that, too.
I messed you up? Here's their sheets. Forget everything on my sheet. This is, is that your sheet?
Yep.
Okay, this is...
And I put one, two, three.
Okay, this is mine, this is mine, right here. So forget all this stuff and just take those and all the sheets. And if I'm not right, Mr. Gilliam, I apologize.
Don't get ahead of yourself.
Okay, so Mr. Anan received eight points. Mr. Oldoff received four points. Mr. Sherwin, 14 points. And Mr. Maggot, three.
Okay, so those are the top four, then?
Right.
Okay. Now, three points, was that three people that voted number one for him? Or was that one person voted number three?
The three points?
Yeah, for Mr. ...
Mr. Maggot?
Yeah.
That was two people.
Voted what? One and two?
One and two, yes.
Okay, all right. Okay.
He just received one point.
Okay.
So it doesn't quite make sense that Mr. Sherwin got 14 points.
That's because you got rated number three or four by a lot of people. I don't think you can do a cumulative total on that. I think you have to go with the number ones, number of one votes, number of two votes.
How many numbers?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what I was trying to do, is...
Okay.
Yeah.
First choice, second choice, and third choice.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what it's supposed to be.
All right.
Yeah. Because if you add up, and the person who was the fourth choice of everybody's going to be the most points.
Let me have Mr. Carlisle look at this.
Okay. Did Ken leave with the... He wants nothing to do with it.
I thought we rated it one, two, and three. I think everybody's confused.
Is your mic on?
David Migget was the lowest, had three, two number ones and one number two. The next lowest was Manny Anan. He had a two and two threes. And then the next was Philip Sherwin, had three, two threes and two twos. And then the fourth would be, I believe it's Stupin.
Okay, so that's... I don't have the list in front of me anymore, so...
Yeah.
Didn't you mark that on the side? No, I don't mean your name. I'm talking about the names that you got. Okay, all right. All right, so it is, according to this, it is Manny Anan, David Migget, Philip Sherwin, and Sherry Stupin. I probably messed that one up. She's the fourth one on the list, so that would be the fill-in if one of the top three is not interested. Okay, is that correct?
But she's a firm, so that should make somebody happy.
Okay.
Which one, is she the firm?
Yeah, she's the fourth. She would be the fourth one. I, we've got three people, Anan, Migget, and Sherwin. And if one of those three, then Stupin. But we can interview four if the council wants to interview four. It's not a big deal to interview four.
I'd like to interview four.
She's got one firm.
Four, four? Okay, so we'll interview all four of those. City clerk? All right, you got that? And here's, that's for your record and the numbers are on the margin. All right. Anyone from the public want to address that? Any not? All right, then we're going to move on to item number 13B. And before I turn this over to Vice Mayor Malte to make a motion, and I'm inferring it to Vice Mayor Malte because he sent an email to the city manager earlier than the email we got from Councilwoman Ferris. So I'm going to let him take the lead on it, okay? I have a couple of things that I would like to present to him for consideration in his motion. There are things that I don't know that he actually knows about. He hasn't had enough time on the council to know some of this stuff is going on. So I want to make sure he knows that before we move forward with that. The first thing is that, and he's referenced in the items that he would like this consultant to accomplish, several things that reference the consultant actually stepping in between the city and the county and so forth on this process. And I want to talk about that a little bit. We have two proceedings going on right now. The court proceeding that is underway. And basically, there isn't any way that an outside person can get involved in that court proceeding without actually bringing another court proceeding up. And we're beyond the 30 days, so that can't happen. We've already filed our brief and the cities, the county, the plaintiffs have filed their brief and we filed our brief. And a consultant that we hire is not going to be able to get involved in that. I don't think that the judge would be appreciative of us, of a consultant approaching them and try to do something on behalf of the city when the city's already filed their brief on that. So there might, it might be difficult for a consultant that we hired to be tasked with being involved in that process, is all I'm saying. All right. The 164 process, which the 164 actually references the code, the state statute that defines how that works. It's a preset process and we can't change that. The state has actually defined the way that's supposed to work. The first step in the 164 conflict resolution process is for the two chief officers, that's my term, not the state's term, which would be our county administrator and our city manager, meet and try to resolve the conflict that exists between the two parties. If they are able to resolve the conflict, they present that resolution to the two elected bodies independently. The city manager would bring it to us, the county administrator would bring it to the county board. If they're not able to resolve that, or if either of the two elected bodies don't accept their resolution, then it has to go the next step. And under the 164 statute, that next step is basically the elected bodies have to meet. And so the two elected bodies meet. We're not at liberty to change the way the state statute works. So we couldn't have a consultant chartered with interfering or intervening between us and the county. The two bodies, two elected bodies have to meet. And so that's another thing that we'd have to be careful, that we don't think that we're going to be able to charter a consultant that actually represents us between us and the county commission. We can't do that. We can have someone provide information to us for that representation, but we can't have someone actually take that capability on for us, okay? So that's not possible to do that when we step through that. The other thing, which is I think actually more important than this than those two things, because those are just mechanics. We can work that out with a consultant as to what they can and can't do in relationship to the 164 process and the court proceedings. The other thing is that under state statute, chapter 163, and this is an interesting thing because it's just one more of those things that I knew was going on and the people here knew what was going on, but during all of the furor that was related to this whole annexation, it was never really talked about. The Department of Equal Opportunity and the Treasury Coast Regional Planning Council have to review the modifications that we make to the future land use map. They then have opportunities to provide back to the city input on things that they would like to see us change in that process. This does not deal with the annexation. This deals with the future land use map change. Okay. The Treasury Coast Regional Planning Council has actually done that already. And I'm a member of that council. It's represented also by two county commissioners, County Commissioner Adams and County Commissioner O'Brien. Actually, County Commissioner Adams is the chair of the council at this point in time. It's represented by the city of Felsmere and also has representation from the city of Vera Beach. And the Treasury Coast Regional Planning Council has produced a draft of their proposal, a draft of their review. They have reviewed the future land use map information related to our land development code, related to our comp plan, related to the information that was submitted by the county to that and related to the information that was submitted by our staff. They've identified seven observations and six recommendations. And you have to understand that when these planning people do these things, they have terms and ways they document it. Basically, these are not simple things. It's not like something like says, change paragraph three to say ABC. like says, change paragraph three to say ABC instead of CDE. And I can tell you, one of the observations, for example, is that we should modify our, our land development code to better define the zoning, the land use requirements as it relates to this specific piece of property. In particular, they're talking about the, the town center, the city center.
And the commercial aspect.
And the commercial, yeah, I mean, basically, the, another thing that they talked about was the, the mixed use criteria that they should modify our land development code and our comp plan to better define the mixed use criteria.
Correct.
I'm sorry, Jim, did you have something?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I, I really, really think that we should be careful about discussing of this annexation as we have, we have had, our legal, our legal advice is to not discuss the annexation publicly as we are currently under litigation.
I won't make any more detailed comments, my comment is this.
Yes, sir.
My comment is this, that the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council has done the preliminary work, that's in statement one, two, or, or majority of preliminary work and stuff that you, that you brought up. They've done a lot of consulting for the city of Sebastian, they were involved in, in redoing our, our parks comp plan element, they've been involved in a lot of stuff here, they did the char, char, charrettes, am I saying that right? Charrette? They did the charrettes for the, the River District, they did the charrette for the five twelve, our five twelve enterprise zone, I'm calling it that, but it's just the five twelve district. They have a stable of extremely qualified planners, and they would be more than happy to take their report to the next step and to be involved with the city of Sebastian in trying to make sure that we have, we have dotted our i's, crossed our t's, and taken into consideration all the stuff that we need to take into consideration as we move forward in this process. Nothing can happen with any consultant until we finish the court case and the 164 process, but they would be more than happy to be involved in that. And the fact that their, we have representation from all four of the, of the civic, the entities, the municipal entities, the county, Felsmere Bureau, and Sebastian on that council also gives them an opportunity to work with, across boundaries with the, with the regionals. So what I would like to do, and I don't, I don't, however you craft your motion on this, I'm not disagreeing with hiring a consultant at all, I'm just saying, whatever, the whatever way we craft the motion, I wanna make sure that the city manager can appropriately execute that motion that we give him. And what I would like to do is to make sure that we don't do anything that prohibits him from using Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council as this, to perform this role, they're, they're highly qualified, they're very capable of doing this, they've done a lot of work for us, they've done work for Vero, they've done work for the county, they've done work for Felsmere, I think they've done work for Felsmere, I'm not really sure. And, and I think that they would be a, a, a perfect entity for us to use to assist us in this process. So I will now turn it over to you.
First, let me explain how I came to this. We looked at the annexation.
And don't get too detailed about the annexation itself because of the.
No, I'm just saying we looked at it, okay? So, the facilitator would look at what has been done in the past, what occurred, as I said in here. First would be to allow the consultant facilitator to become familiar with the documents as they currently stand, review all the documents presented for accuracy and completeness, examine all data presented in the documents for accuracy and completeness. In this role, the consultant facilitator will be an expediter between the IRC, the city, Sebastian, and the Graves Brothers. The purpose of the consultant facilitator is to ensure that all data, documents, and variables, financial impacts on schools, traffic flow, police, fire, emergency needs, and public work service have been properly and accurately examined and presented to ensure that all documents and conditions represent the best possible outcome for the city of Sebastian. The consultant facilitator will render a summary report to the city council with his, her questions, concerns, and recommendations to bring this matter of annexation to a satisfactory completion. That's my motion.
Okay, and what I'm, what I'm trying to say is that that's gonna be impossible for the city manager to do. I, I, I don't know how he's gonna be able to accomplish those steps that you're talking about doing, we have legal requirements that are come on us, you, you might wanna comment, Mr. Carlisle.
Are we, are we having a group discussion here or is it just down there?
You, you can be involved in it no matter.
Please, I'd like to.
Okay, but. That's your motion?
That's my motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, now we have a motion and a second. And I'm gonna ask Mr. Carlisle, before I come to you, I wanna ask Mr. Carlisle a question.
Okay.
You're given that marching order.
I, I, first I have to consult with legal, 'cause I don't know what our, where we still overstep the bounds between the 164 process and the, the court case that's, that's pending, so I need to get legal advice on that. Pending that, I, we're just asking for a third-party planner to come in and, and look at what we did. I'm hiring a brand-new planner, junior planner, starting in January, that hasn't been involved in any of this, that we wouldn't have to hire a consultant, it's, he's done planning all over the state, he's, he's, comes highly recommended, he was in Palm Bay, he knows our codes, that person could, he's in the, he's an impartial person, he hasn't seen it, he hasn't been involved in it, so that's something we could look at. There's a, there's a myriad of things, myriad of things we can do, we have a consulting engineer, Kim Lee Horn, that's already working on our comp plan, they could look at what we did and say, but we also have a court case pending saying whether we did what we should have done or not have done. Treasure Coast Planning Council, as you mentioned, will, has looked at our future land use, and they've made comments, and we'll address those as, after the lawsuit and the timeframe has expired, so if I'm gonna hire a consultant, I've got a consultant on staff with Kim Lee Horn that hasn't been involved in this, I have a new planner coming on that could, could look at it, I'm just not sure where I would get, if I'm just gonna go out and hire a consultant planner to look at it, is what I would think is what the question is. Is that correct?
I'm, I'm really looking for somebody to facilitate between the county and us to make sure that we get the best resolution possible.
I don't think we could, I don't think we could give that out.
That's where the challenge comes in, so then.
Could we, could we? Can I, can I, can I interject?
Just a second, a second. Okay, I, I, I'm trying to get him comfortable, then we'll move forward, okay?
So the third part that you've left out of the, the 164 process, which we have to get through, is if the city council and the county commission don't agree, then they mutually hire an arbitrator to sit down and do that, and that's in the 164 process. And that's, that's a requirement of the, if the city council and the county commission can't do it, then they hire a third-party arbitrator. But it has to be agreeable, so the, the city could hire an arbitrator, but that, that may not be what the county wants.
I'm gonna open this up to public input in a few minutes.
Well, if, if I can, Mr. Mayor, this is the attorney, the attorney.
So, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, if I can, that is the issue which we're currently, right now, we're enjoying, that was filed, that's an injunction currently, right now, by Judge Kroom in the court, where that, that issue specifically with that meeting between the city and the county is enjoyed until this issue currently, right now.
Yes.
Comes back from Judge Metzer, and that should be right around January, I, I intensify her decision to come back.
Correct.
Yeah, I understand we've got an injunction on that.
Yeah, that, that mediation is on hold, period.
Councilmember Gilliam.
Yeah, so, first of all, we have an attorney that represents us on the annexation, correct? Does he know that we're doing what we're doing here tonight, I mean, does he have a copy of this?
Okay.
I mean, don't you think he should be in on the, any discussion?
Well, I, I have, we have an email from, from the vice mayor asking that we put this on the agenda and we discuss it.
Okay. But did he weigh, did he weigh in on this at all?
He all weighed in on us not talking about the annexation.
Yeah.
While it's under litigation.
He's already done that.
Every person that's given us legal advice has said we do not discuss it publicly while it's under litigation.
Well, that was the other thing I was gonna bring up, I mean, we're gonna be, if we hire a consultant, we're gonna be giving away our hand right up to the public, that's the other issue, but, I mean, listen.
We're, we're basically, we can't talk about the case, we can't talk about the, the, we can't talk about the, the annexation, we can't talk about any of the future land use map issues, we can only talk about whether we wanna hire a consultant.
The, the petition is public record, the response, the brief is public record, and that is gonna be a response to the brief, which we're waiting on, correct, Mr. Attorney?
Yes.
All right, so, I, I'm not sure you guys understand how this whole process goes down, so, while, while you're trying to bring in a facilitator, you got the annexation agreement out here with the Graves Brothers, you gotta have to get them involved, you have to get the city involved, you have to get Audubon Society involved, I mean, this is a very complicated situation, it's not a matter of, hey, let's bring a facilitator in, hey, Judge, let's just hold everything off, everything's gonna be just fine, we're gonna figure this out.
Okay, so are you saying that you don't support bringing in someone right now?
What I'm saying is I got some questions I'd like to ask, you know?
Okay, what are they?
You know, well, first thing was, who, and maybe Paul might have answered that question, who would the facilitator be, would it be a neutral party, that's the first thing, the, the other issue was, you know, why don't, well, I, I, I wanna be careful not to cross the line and give away our hand, because we did have a, a big executive meeting the other night, we got a lot done, we, we sent in a response that we never even looked at, I mean, that was hilarious, I, I, and I'm not talking about it.
You can't talk about that executive meeting.
I'm not talking about it, but I'm just saying, we sent in that response when I said to petition the court and save some time.
Mr. Mayor, point of order, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Gilliam clearly has no clue as to how this process should go.
So, I have, I have a clue.
And he clearly violates the law all the time, and he's trying to do that now.
So, so, let me finish talking.
Counsel, counsel of order, please.
Mr. Mayor, if I can have a point of order.
I am now officially tabling item number thirteen B, and that's not debatable.
You can't do that, there's a motion on the floor.
We can table it with a motion on the floor, and it's not debatable. To table, for me to ta, table motion on that is not debatable.
You can, yeah, I want the attorney to weigh in on that, point of order.
All right, let's get a parliamentary decision.
If you wanna, is it table, is there a second to table it?
Do I have a second to table it?
Yes.
Because that, that way we don't have this conversation until after these other things are done.
I, I would just prefer also, if I can, I, finish your motion and second it and, and go ahead, but the issue, Your Honor, is that, I mean, Mr. Mayor, is that, I guess we're discussing all these issues and that the city attorney has an item 14A, which I know is at the end of the agenda, but I would let, kinda like, like to push it up just to put, make sure that the attorney's position is out there, just for the record, 'cause we're having all these extraneous conversations, and we did, by the way, councilmember, did have a conversation with the council who's represented in Audubon, and the bottom line is, they, they don't want, I mean, they don't mind general comments, but the issue is when we have these kind of discussions, these can be used as admissions against interest, and which would be against us.
Okay.
Which we're trying to prevent. Right now we have several issues, right now, you're correct, councilmember, we did file our petition, they filed their petition for writ.
Command, councilmember who?
You.
Oh, thank you.
I'm just saying that you're correct, they did file, they did file their writ, we did file our answer within sixty days, right now we are pending their reply, it should be on about December twenty-third, my conversation today with the, our attorney, it should be filed on about twenty-third, at that point in time, at the, the judge will have all the facts, everything in front of her, to make a decision based on that, whether or not, you know, what happened to inspire correctly or so, and if it did, it comes back, and if it doesn't, she'll remand it back to this board, but the bottom line is the recommendation is to say absolutely nothing on the doyce at this point, and just let the judge make her ruling.
Okay, I have a motion to table item thirteen B, it's been seconded, I'd like to, the, the reason for tabling this item is because in reality we're stepping across a legal boundary in conversations, I don't know how we could have a conversation about it and not step across those legal boundaries. I think that we could bring this back up for, we can bring this back up at a, at a meeting once we get past those legal boundaries and make a determination about how to do this.
Can we address this in an executive session?
No, we can't, 'cause it's not litigation, so, the only thing, the state law allows us to address the executive session is litigation, so we can't do it there. I, I don't, I don't have an issue with what you wanna do, but I, it, we can't, I'd say can't see how we can discuss this without crossing a boundary that we can't cross right now. So, what I'd like to do is to table, I do have a motion, let's have a roll call vote.
We're still, we're still on discussion, right? Wait, wait, I didn't have a discussion.
The motion is to table, and there's no discussion on that, it's law, if it carries. So, let's have a roll call vote, please. Call the roll.
You had a motion, it's been seconded, she just voted.
You have to vote on a, on a table motion, yes.
Okay. Councilmember Gilliam?
No.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Paris?
No.
Mayor Dodd?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Motti?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
Motion fails.
Now, I will tell you, the, the, the conversation has to be purely on directing the, the city manager to hire an attorney without going across any boundaries, and so, because I don't know how we can do this, we can have much conversation about this, what I'm gonna do is ask that we vote on the motion that was presented, and let that be turned over to the city manager. I just don't know how we can carry on a conversation with this without crossing the legal boundaries that we don't need to cross. Okay, you have a problem with that, Jim, Ms. Hill?
I, I just, this is a, this is completely, it's, it's impossible to go forward with this, and so, I, I, it's, it's impossible, saving, putting us in legal jeopardy, I would of course agree with you that we should call the vote, but I, again, fear for Sebastian.
I think we are, I think we're crossing a boundary at this point in time that's not positive for the city, and I'm not, I'm not questioning hiring someone to assist us in the future, but we have to get past these issues that we're caught in right now before we can do that, and I have a, I have a real issue with that. I'm gonna open it up to the public primarily 'cause I need to do that. You have, go ahead, you have something to say first.
You said that the, the, the reply to the brief will be December one, twenty-third?
My calculation is talking today to the opposing council, I'm reading the timeframe on the motion to show cause, is they have twenty days to file a reply, we, we filed it.
On the second, okay.
Right, should be about the twenty-third, so that's around Christmas time, I assume during the holidays, probably by Jan, by the beginning of January, we should have any.
The judge will issue an order.
Say again, sir?
She, she will, they will issue an order.
Roger, that's her, and then by then, city council, I mean, the city attorney would advise the council about that opinion.
Mr. Attorney, in, in your opinion, not having our legal counsel representing us on the annexation to proceed with this without his advice, was that in the best interest of this community?
Can you repeat the questions, councilman?
So, without having Dan Abbott, the attorney we retained, to handle this annexation, would it be in the city's best interest to proceed with the consultant without having him in on this to advise us?
Paul's decision based on the council has nothing to do legally, I mean, Mr. Abbott was hired for a specific issue, he's addressed, he's filed that brief, and it's pending, I, I don't see that Mr. Abbott has to be here to have these discussions.
Mr. Dodd, you said you wanted to table this to date uncertain, what, did you have a date?
No, 'cause I don't know when this will be finished, I would, I would love to put a date on it, but I don't know if it's gonna be done.
The judge will issue, after the reply's been responded, she'll review it, and then obviously, after the holidays, I think she'll issue her order, and it's either gonna come back to us, remanded back to us, or, or it's gonna be dismissed, one or the other. I don't, and Charles, I'd like to ride along with you on the, the facilitator, but I just don't think that with all the players involved, it's gonna happen unless you get the judge to put everything on hold and get the attorney to issue a med, get an order for a mediator and stop the whole thing, am I correct, Mr. Attorney?
At this point, it's pending before the judge, I'm not sure if that's even a term of art.
Is that doable, that you ask the judge for a?
I would have to, I'm not prepared to answer that question without talking to the city attorney and/or the county attorney who you guys hired.
We can't, we can't address that in an open session.
And our city, well, I can't say it.
No, we can't address that.
We've gotten legal advice on that, we've already gotten the advice.
So, so, okay, and, and again, we would, you know, some of these councilmembers were led to believe that this thing could be amended, and it can't.
No, it can't.
Correct, and I just wanna make sure they remember that, 'cause it's gonna be public record when the transcript comes out, he was told that this thing could be amended. I wanted to stop the train before it left the station, but I'm not gonna get into that because I don't wanna cross that line. Now the train's already left the station, and I suggest that we advise the attorney to ask the city for relief and set aside the annexation agreement with Graves Brothers, and maybe the attorney can, maybe the attorney, excuse me, maybe, maybe the attorney.
Again, again.
Would you suspend, please? You're stepping into a territory that we can't discuss.
I'm not discussing, I'm asking for advice.
Yes, you are, you are, you are trying to provide direction to the attorney on a territory that we can't discuss.
Because it's in your favor.
No, not because it's in my favor, it's because.
But it's not this community's favor, and let me just make that clear. Just for the record again, you know, Jim Stokes, item 14A, is that we have absolutely no discussion at all.
That's right, we can't discuss it.
All due respect, council, councilmember, if I just can't finish, it's just, it's clear what he wants to emphasize for this board, to understand that there should be absolutely no conversation in the public about the pending case, that's it, it's gonna end in a couple of weeks, just wait it out and see what happens, that's, that's all I'm saying, right now it's pending litigation, we just need to wait this over. But you didn't answer my question, I had a legal question, I asked that if you can ask for relief from the judge and set aside that annexation agreement at the same time. And your attorney can you advise? We've already received legal advice on that question.
You're asking, you're, you're asking for an opinion on something we can't discuss, it's that simple.
It's not in your best interest to discuss, why don't we just open it to the public?
Why don't we just open it to the public?
Okay.
Maybe we can talk some sense into you guys.
Uh, anybody in the public who want to talk about this, come forward.
My name is Charles.
Yeah, back up a little bit, see if that, now, now.
My name is Charles Stedelman.
Yeah, don't put your hands on, that podium seems to have a short or something in it.
Uh, my name is Charles Stedelman. Uh, I'm at, uh, 146 Mayberry Street, Sebastian, Florida. Um, I currently reside, uh, I currently serve on the Natural Resource Board as its newly-elected chairperson. Um, what, um, I can't refer to anything that you guys are in court with right now, and I appreciate everybody's, um, input on it. What I would like to say to that, and I would like to get an opinion from our attorney on this, because I've been given several different guidances on this, on ordinance number 0711, uh, section 2, 241, Natural Resource Board Mission and Duties, as it refers to the regulatory programs guidance under.
We're not, we're not talking about that right now.
No, sir, I, I recognize them, and I'm talking about things that are, as we move forward, so that I can avoid these things.
We, we're, the, the issue we're talking about right now is not that, so that, you'd have to bring that up under.
Well, he's talking about bringing in a consultant and paying something else.
But this is not, this has nothing to do with, with the Natural Resources Board or with any charter for the Natural Resources Board.
Well, that's why I would like to get an opinion on that, and I'm not being disrespectful at all to the board or to the mayor. Under, um, regulatory programs guidance, under section B, Proposals for Development of Additional Areas of Environmental Protection Regulations, section C, Formulation of Policy Considering to be Used as Guidelines by the Planning and Zoning Commission in considerating, in considering land development regulations. Going forward, I'd like to remind the council that we, as Natural Resource Board, inform and guide planning and zoning at your request. If planning and zoning doesn't have the ammunition they need to make a good, valid decision, then you're always going to run into these problems. And if I'm inconsistent or incorrect in that assumption, then I would like that guidance to come from somebody.
Yeah, this is, this is not a Natural Resources Board issue.
I, 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 um, would like to respectfully disagree with that, um, as it's related to zoning, um, and, um, in guidelines of new land development and, and such. And, um, that's the main reason why I came up here. And I think it is a, an effort by the city of Sebastian and the people who live here to try to take away some of those powers that it was so centrally located with so many, so few people here for so long. That's why a lot of these boards were developed.
Well, that, that, that same group of people that, that you're talking about wrote that document that, that produced that.
That's correct.
And certainly, if, if the city staff, uh, in the process of dealing with some of their issues needs and, and wants support from the Natural Resources Board, they'll bring that to you. But in this particular case, the issue we're talking about here is not a Natural Resources Board issue. It's not dealing with, there will be issues related to this at some point in time that they may bring to the Natural Resources Board, but that's not something that we're talking about now that relates to that.
I, I would still respectfully disagree with you, and, and especially because how, um, the talk about representing the city of Sebastian and not the city, the board. I represent the city of Sebastian at this point.
Yes, yes.
I think the people of the city of Sebastian would appreciate bringing all weapons to bear, to bring the Natural Resource Board on board with this, maybe as the consultant you're talking about. Um, we are a force multiplier. We are a board of nine professionals that have been doing this kind of stuff for a long time, and we are at your disposal.
Yes, I understand that, but you're not planners. That's the problem, is you're not planners.
We do have planners on our staff, though.
But that's not, that's not the role of the Natural Resources Board.
And I do, and I would like to get an opinion from the city, uh, attorney on this.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, just to direct that, we have a 9:15, in case you want to have a motion. Mr. Attorney, you got 9:15 in case you want to have a motion to extend.
Motion to extend?
Uh, motion to extend, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye.
Okay. Four to one.
Super.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. Joseph Powell, and I'm the president of Boxwell Consulting, and, uh, as a point of order, um, you all had a motion on the floor and a second. I don't think you ever took the vote.
We, that's a main motion, and I propose a subsidiary motion to table. We have not taken a vote on the main motion, but the subsidiary motion, we voted on a subsidiary motion, which was proper protocol.
Okay. So, you had a vote on that subsidiary motion?
We still have a main motion on the floor.
It failed.
But we can, we can do all kinds of procedural and subsidiary motions.
Regardless, regardless, anyway, the motion, the original motion and the second that you had by, uh, Councilman, uh, Paris, uh, had nothing to do with discussing the annexation. Had to do with a consult. So you weren't overriding that line that we're on.
Well, we were, because we were actually carrying on conversations about.
Well, it's because you went over that. You shouldn't have carried on that conversation.
Yeah, yeah.
You should have taken the vote.
That's, that's the key.
Anyway, beyond that.
Yeah.
Listen, I don't think that this is all that difficult to solve. Everybody at the table, Graves Brothers, Audubon, RNA, uh, the city, the county, you can, everybody can get what they want without somebody giving up something. It's just a matter of setting everybody down and getting it done. This can be done. It's not that difficult. As a negotiator, whenever I negotiate, I usually have to get somebody to give up the world in order to get the other person happy. You don't have to do that in this negotiation. You just have to be able to sit down and talk about it.
And I, I have absolutely no dissolutions about the fact that we will solve this.
Right.
I believe it will be solved.
I agree with you 100%.
I don't believe it'll be an issue, except that we have a legal proceeding that we have to deal with before we can get to the resolution under chapter 164. And then, so, we have to deal with that legal proceeding first. So, I, I, as a result of that.
I don't want to really get into your legal procedure because it wouldn't be proper for me to discuss it.
Yes.
But I think it is fair to discuss the fact that you have a motion and a second, and you're going to take the vote. That's fine.
And I, I run the meeting, and I'll take care of that one.
And I'm saying, why don't you do that? But after that, I think there's a way of solving the legal procedure, but I don't think that should be solved on the dais.
Yes. I have, I have no issue with that at all. My, my, my issue only is who we bring in as a consultant.
Right.
That's my only issue.
Okay.
I've decided on it.
So?
I'm sorry?
We have decided.
Uh, uh, would you say that so you can be, I'm sorry?
As you just said, we've decided to hire a consultant?
No, we haven't voted on it yet. I'd like to vote on it.
Thank you. I'd like that, too.
Mr. Mayor, I, I'd like to put an amendment on that motion, if, if that's okay.
File a amendment.
Because I think it'll go hand in hand with the consultant. I think what we should do is, um, instruct an amendment to the motion, that we instruct the, uh, city attorney to direct Dan, uh, the attorney that's representing us on the, uh, the lawsuit, to instruct him to set aside the annexation agreement with Graves Brothers and ask for relief from the court.
We can't, we can't bring that motion up. All right, all right, that's your amendment.
That's my amendment, if maybe there's a second.
Do we have a second on an amendment?
There's no way.
And, and then you could do all of it together.
You, you placed your amendment. Do we have a second on that amendment?
Your Honor, if I can before you, e- even vote on this thing.
I know, we can't. I, I agree. There's no second anyway, so the amendment.
There's pending litigation.
The amendment does have no second.
Right now, in front of a judge.
The amendment.
And, again, I, I don't know, I don't know how much to emphasize this, it's just.
I'm going to call a question on the motion for the consultant.
We just got a couple of weeks. Just let it lie.
I'm going to call a question on the motion for the consultant.
Yeah, but here's the problem, Mr. Attorney. We were misled at the executive committee.
Again, for the record.
I just called, Damien, this, this is not, not negotiable, once again. I just called the, I'm going to call the question. So, would you have a roll call, please? Uh, this is the original motion.
I think there was an amendment, amendment on there. Did somebody say they won't?
It wasn't seconded.
Wasn't seconded?
No. There was no second on your amendment.
Along with you.
So, um, um, would you have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Hill?
No.
Councilmember Paris? Mayor Dodd?
No.
Vice Mayor Mahdi?
Yes.
And Councilmember Gilliams?
It's not going to make any sense, but yes.
Okay, so the motion carries.
Okay, motion carries. Uh, did you get your margin order, sir?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion.
There is no time limit on that.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that everyone who affirmatively voted on that paid the, uh, the, all, all the legal fees that we get sued for.
All right, come on.
No, that's a serious motion. Can I ask for a second?
Do we have a second on that?
No.
I, I would love to second it, but I won't. Let's go on to, uh, let's go on to item number, um.
Well, I'd like to make my motion, please.
On what? We've already put that to bid. We, we approved the consultant.
Well, I'd like to table the pending lawsuit between the Audubon Society.
You can't, you can't pin that. You don't have the right to do that. The court, the court does that. We can't intervene in that.
Really?
There's nothing, this, this city council could pass motions from now until 2 o'clock tomorrow morning, and it would make no difference to the judge. Period.
And, and, well, that's.
It might just make the judge mad, that's all.
Isn't it important to avoid litigation, though? I mean, all this.
Yeah, I, I, we're, we're beyond in, in avoiding that. It's done. I mean, there's nothing we can do about that. So, we're going to go on to item number 13C. Uh, CY signage contract, um, this is pretty evident, if you, if you look at the transmittal that came with that, um, SignStar has agreed to put this together. There's a budget in here. City staff would like to say something about it.
So, as you know, we've been trying to, to put a signage package together, wayfinding signage, um, entrance signage that's consistent and, and provides the necessary information to stat, to the, um, to the public. The city council approved the design criteria, and now we, and, uh, procurement had put out a proposal, request for proposals. We had some very, very, um, talented people propose it, but the one that was recommended actually works for Disney and makes some beautiful signs, and it was, uh, it was a pretty good, I was pretty impressed with their signage and went through all the processes, the interview processes, the, and everything, and I'll let, uh, Ms. Frazier address that if there's any more questions on the purchasing process, but we, we ask that you recommend the, the approval of this item.
I've got a question.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval.
Second.
I said I had a question.
You're going to. We, we have a motion and a second now, so, okay.
Uh, you went to, Mr. Carlisle, you went through all the processes. Did, did this go through Parks and Recreation?
It went through our leisure services.
No, no. The Parks and Recreation Committee, did this, did these signs go in front of them?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah, they approved this.
You believe so, or you're not sure?
Yeah, they did approve it.
Can I get the clerk to check that? I'd just like to know if Parks and Recreation had a chance to review this, that's all. Can you check that?
Not right now, Mr. Councilmember.
But then I'll go ahead. No, you got a motion on the floor. All right.
All right, we have a motion on the floor.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have one question about that.
Please, go ahead.
In the, uh, document, it says, "As part of the effort, SignStar will provide required site safety protections, et cetera, et cetera." But they do not say anything about work conducted in the landscape area and protected. They talk about hardscape, but not about repairing landscape.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear. What was the question?
In the proposal where it says, "As part of this effort, SignStar will provide all required site safety protection. This includes barricades, temporary storage, staging, MOD traffic signs, flagmen, sidewalk protection, pedestrian traffic control, hardscape protection, building protection, and daily debris disposal." It says nothing about protection or replacing landscaping if damaged. They've got to be working the landscape areas. Hardscape and landscape are two different things.
Yes, so on the bid form, if you take a look, the actual description does include everything associated with the, um, the construction and installation of the actual sign. So that will include landscape as well. Everything is included per the bid form that was submitted by the proposer.
Will include the landscaping, because it's not stated here. That's why I ask.
Okay, there's an et cetera that continues on, on the bid form. Are you looking on the bid form?
I didn't see that on there. I just saw this. And that's why I asked the question.
No, that's fine. No, that's fine.
So are you okay with that now? You okay with that now?
I'm okay with it. It's there.
Mr. Mayor, you know, we can't get certification that this went through. There's all parks here. These are all the signs for the parks. How do we know?
I watched the Parks and Rec meetings when they approved...
I can't support something that did not go through a committee, that, you know, we ask people to volunteer.
Okay, Councilmember Gilliams, I watched the Parks and Rec meetings. I watch every one of them, and I watched them approve this sign design.
Brian said he had given it to Parks and Rec.
Yeah, they approved the sign design.
He just...
They don't allocate these dollars. This isn't their responsibility.
I understand that.
I watched them actually approve the sign design.
So did the city council.
That's all I want, the verification.
We can make it a condition of the motion, but I don't think we need to.
No, I take you... That's the case. I'm going to check later.
Yeah.
Sorry, so you all had already approved the sign design, and then that sign design that you approved was given to the Parks and Rec?
Yes, and they had no problem with that sign design. I watched that meeting where they looked at it. They had no problem with it. Yeah. I watch all the meetings.
Do we have any signs that say 6-0 Grouch's?
We've still got the Grouch's, but there's more than six.
No, no, no. All can decide. Mr. Mayor, seriously, all can decide. Do we have signs that say 6-0 Grouch's on it?
Yeah, we still do.
Do we really need that? Is that really positive?
That was decided to keep that on the side, so it's still there.
Decided by who?
That was decided by the city council.
The old city council?
Well, Damien, we can't set... I know it's a trend in politics today to undo everything that the previous administration did.
I just want something more positive. People coming to town and say 6-0 Grouch's. That's not very positive.
We're not going to go back and try to overdo. That was approved by the council, the sign design was.
All right, just thought I'd put my two cents.
All right, so this is dollars. Would you have a roll call, please? Because we're running late.
Councilmember Paris?
Yes.
Mayor Dodd?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Malti?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilliams?
Yes.
And Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
All right, we're at the city attorney's matters. You want to speak on the signs?
Yeah.
Please come forward.
Well, he can come forward, but that motion has already gone through.
I know it has. I know it has. I have to apologize. I didn't give you an opportunity to speak.
Okay. I didn't get a chance, Ben Hocker, city of Sebastian. I didn't really get a chance to go through your packet. I was here for the meeting when you decided, yeah, we're going to do signs. They might be this, they might be that. I didn't see the parks. It would have been nice if we could have seen some sign put up there or the public being shown the potential signs that are going to be put up.
We already done that.
When?
Those signs were approved by the city council several months ago. And when that was reviewed by the council and approved, they were...
It was said, "Some will look like the working waterfront signs. Some might look like the park signs."
That was all done, and when we actually did the approval on those signs, there was all kinds of overheads. The growth management department director presented them. She showed all kinds... And she showed multiple sign evaluations and options.
Yeah, but in the docket that I just quickly looked through, maybe I missed those signs in your folder that you have.
They're not in my folder. We previously have approved those signs.
Might have been nice to see what the guy's doing.
But we previously approved those signs.
Okay, no argument. But you're going for $229,000 to do signs over three years. Now, I don't think you were on the council. Maybe Mr. Hill was.
Probably.
We went through a whole bunch of meetings for signage for the city coming in on US 1, from the north, from the south, and from 512. There was a lot of... The monies were, I believe, assigned to it. We had people come in here showing us the signs, what they would do, how it would look. My question is, is it really... About three or four years ago, we were doing signs for the entranceway. Nothing ever happened.
This is going to happen. That's why we're spending the money.
Well, this is three years ago this happened. We allocated money for it. I don't know what you did with the money.
Wait, wait a minute. Hold on, Mr. Hocker. Back up for a step, and then step forward, and don't touch the podium.
Jesus.
Now, now, talk.
Well, we're spending $230,000. Let's get another table here, okay?
Yeah.
And where did the public have the input for the signs?
When we approved the signs, that was done... That was when the public approved, when the public had input on the signage.
Yeah, well, if I remember correctly, that most of those meetings, there were four people in the audience here.
Well, I can't... I don't know how the council can direct the public to come to the meetings.
I'm not saying that, but it could have been publicized somewhere. You could have put it up on the city webpage. I have no idea what you're going to do with the sign. And again, when I first moved here, grumpy something or others on your sign.
I know. We were thinking about all of us when we did that.
Yeah, well, I think personally, to become a grown-up city, it might be worth thinking about taking that off.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
But where was the money for three years ago? Where did that go if we did? And is it included here? Or do we put it in the general fund?
All right, city attorney matters.
Nothing, Your Honor. I mean, at this point, we readdressed item 14A, so it's clear.
Now, we're going to the city managers' matters.
Just wish everybody a happy holiday and Merry Christmas, and thank staff for all the hard work they did and the Christmas party parade and the December 7th and everything that they've done to make that happen. And so, they need to be... Get lots of accolades for the volunteers and everybody that put that parade together.
Thank you. It was... The Christmas parade was a really nice affair. And I even got the city manager to pass out candy.
You did?
Yeah. City clerks matters. None. Okay, city council members. Councilmember Gilliams?
Oh, first up, huh?
Yes, sir.
Mr. City Manager, do we have an update on the American Legion? On has the site plan moving?
So they... Police has had meetings with their engineer, and they have to bring documents back to us on what they're doing, which includes traffic counts and things of that nature. So they had a meeting with them, with the engineer, I think actually the next day after that.
So it's back on track. It's productive?
It is.
Okay. The other thing that I wanted to ask about was the... We had this legislative delegation wish list. Did we put something together for our delegation for the upcoming Tallahassee session?
I was putting one together, but I didn't... I wasn't able to get all the information from the county and from our engineer to get the...
So we submitted nothing?
No, we did not.
Okay, so we failed there. Let me ask you this. The gentleman with family appliances down there on US 1, are we able to help that gentleman out, or...
So we've met with him and given him all the applications for his variance and the things that he needs to do to complete. He has not returned any of those documents to the city.
Okay, well, it's in motion. Okay, it's in motion. The other thing I wanted to get a consensus, Mr. Mayor, from the board about a citizens academy. I know we have one for the police department. I'd like to introduce one on a future agenda. I'll get with the city manager if I can get a consensus to get something on the agenda.
Well, you can put on the agenda without the board consensus.
Okay, well, I'd like to know how the board feels about a citizens academy. Is that a positive?
I'd have to see some specifics before I would...
Well, the police citizens academy saves the community a quarter million dollars. They got a lot of volunteers. And I'd like to do a citizens academy where we can get a lot of volunteers and get educated on the different departments and how they can utilize government. So I'm looking forward for the new year, for the new year. It's my Christmas list. The, Mr. City Manager, the handicap at all our parks. I know that we had handicap at one of them. Did we ever get that one park with new handicap equipment?
So the Parks and Rec decided, rather than spend all the money on one park at Friendship Park, as we upgrade each park in each individual neighborhood, we're going to spend money to make all the parks more handicap accessible.
And do we have a timeline for that?
We're working on it. I don't know what the exact timeline is. But as we upgrade the parks, like the one they're doing now, they're putting in the...
So we'll see something in 2020, then?
So, yes, we're working on all of them. There's a certain number of dollars we're going to be spending each year, so it's going to take a long process. But it seemed more appropriate that everybody that could access a park could access something that was handicap accessible than just one park.
Cool. Okay, great. The last, let's see, grant writers. I know it's probably not in the budget, but I'd like to get a consensus from the board as well to figure out how we can, for the new year, at least hire one, two, maybe three grant writers. There's a lot of funding out there that I think that we can reach out to based on also the governor's office is putting money in the budget, $50 million for the cleanup of our rivers and stormwater. And there's a lot of funds out there. And if we have the grant writers, where we have a program set up where either they get a percentage of what they bring in, or... I'm sure you know how that works. It's something I'd like to see for the new year. And I'm sure the board, anytime you can get grant writers to bring money in. Like the gentleman at the airport is doing a fabulous job in getting the money from the FDOT. I just think that we're leaving money on the table in other areas. So that's the other thing. And last and final thing, I want to wish the community a merry, merry Christmas. And maybe everybody can reach out to somebody and give a little love, a little peace, and God bless. And I want to also thank my wife for... She put a book out on Amazon, Bonnie Fay Gilliams, and it's about helping marriages stay together. Marriage-durable book. So it's only $8. So if you're having marriage problems, it's a great book. And God bless everybody and have a great Christmas and a happy new year.
Councilmember Hill?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We just... We kind of glossed over the brief announcements today, so I'll go ahead and go through. There's a December 14th and 15th, the Craft Show will be at Riverview Park from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And December 14th, Reach Across America Ceremony will take place at noon at Veterans Memorial Park. That'll actually... Isn't that going to be at our cemetery as well?
10:30 at the cemetery.
10:30 at our cemetery. And then the Sebastian Police Department Movie Night Out in Riverview Park, which they'll be watching Twin Pairs, is from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. What day?
December 20th.
December 20th.
That's the Muppets Christmas. That's the Muppets Christmas, right?
All right, very good. Thank you. And then, of course, I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas. This is a wonderful time of year. You see so many wonderful things happening in the city of Sebastian. Light of Night was spectacular. I want to commend staff and the PD for doing such a great job. Man, the police department, you guys rock and roll. And I just love being a part of you because, you know, the way you were handing out shirts that were given to the city, just to make that clear. But, you know, your outreach and your volunteerism is incredible. The way that you dealt with the traffic control down there was spectacular. I've always had issues with that in the past. It's been very dark, and it's very dangerous on US 1, but you guys did a hell of a job of making sure that everything was maintained. So kudos to you guys. The Christmas parade is wonderful as always. So staff across the board, I hope you have a wonderful Merry Christmas. I look forward to another year up here. I mean, I look forward to another year with you all. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Malti?
Just wishing everybody a healthy and safe new year.
Councilmember Paris?
Yes, for the record, I would like to state that the fabricated editorial from the local online evil trash tabloid to be false and completely inaccurate. I love this community. It's so out of my character to call people names and so below me. I don't even know what a carpet picker is in Chesapeake Bay and how they manicure their lawns. Completely appalled by all of that. I am a Yankee, proud transplant. Resident here 32 years from Pennsylvania. And having a background in marketing and media, I understand how easily it is to manipulate social media. So you have to be really careful what you read. I'm available personally anytime. It was so horrible that it caused a red flag from Channel 5 television, and they called me today at 12:00 and insisted on driving up to make it clear. So go ahead and check that out on WPTV.com.